Second.
Got a motion in a second. Signify by saying aye. Aye. All say nay? Alright, so it looks like I got four yes votes to excuse off hour. And moving on to number three, public comments. If you wish to comment on any of the items, four point one through four point three, please just come forward. See and none. And it brings us to number four, presentation by the city attorney.
Yes. Mayor Proton. Uh, in council, the uh, there's three items on tonight's agenda. Only four point two and four point three will be discussed. We didn't get any new information on item four point one, which I'll tell you about, but um, that one won't be discussed in tonight's such close session.
Okay, thank you.
Offers and counter offers and provided unanimous instructions to its negotiators. There's no further reportable action at this time. Item four point three, employee matters, replacement of the city manager in closed session. Council provided unanimous direction on the terms and conditions of the proposed contract with John J. Murphy. There's no further reportable action at this time. That concludes the closed session. Report, your honor.
Thank you, sir. So, so we will move a call to order, the six o'clock special meeting, city clerk, please. Here.
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 Thank you. Let the record reflect, I want to thank Mr. Bishop for opening the five o'clock meeting. I was detained at another meeting. He opened the meeting quite admirably and I did arrive shortly thereafter. So, I was able to participate in all matters. Okay, so we are at item number ten. Ann Ambrose.
So, the item before you that we'll be discussing tonight is the initial conversation with the council about the, the results of a cost of services study that the city of Palmdale had conducted by revenue and cost specialists. So, under state law, public agencies are entitled to recover the costs reasonably borne by providing certain services that are considered personal choice services. These are services where the customer is identifiable and the service is measurable and can be held for non-payment such as building permits, plan check, and inspections. It should be noted that impact fees such as drainage, sanitation, traffic, parks, et cetera, are not a component of this study and will be considered much later after impact studies associated with the general plan are complete. The city annually or periodically adopts a fee resolution that outlines these various fees for services and staff annually review the schedule to determine if any modifications are needed based on services provided, justified and documentable cost increases or level increases based on CPI or ENRI. And these changes are brought to the council for public hearing prior to adoption. Annually, the collection of these fees constitutes a significant portion of the city's revenues, representing approximately seven million dollars collected in eighteen and nineteen. But while minor modifications have been made over the years, it has been at least well over ten years since the city has conducted a comprehensive review of the actual cost to provide these services. Much has changed in the ensuing years, including increased salary costs, dramatic changes in staffing levels, update processes, significant regulatory and reporting changes, and technology improvements that necessitated staff to really initiate this study. So, the city engaged revenue and cost specialists to conduct the analysis and the purpose of the study was to identify areas where tax dollars may be subsidizing personal choice services and also to ensure that the fees the city charged did not exceed the cost of providing the services. So, with that, I would like to introduce to you Eric, sorry, Eric Johnson, who has conducted this study for the city. We have a brief PowerPoint presentation and he's going to go through the, the report with you and talk to you a little bit about the policy considerations for you to consider. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Eric.
Thank you, Eric. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's good to be before you tonight to talk about this cost of services study. We'll, we'll go, be going through the report here today and what it did and how we did it and, and make sure that you feel comfortable with how we got to the results that we got to. Before we do that, just want to give a little background on revenue and cost specialist. We were founded back in nineteen eighty in the wake of the passage of Proposition thirteen and Proposition four, where two former city managers and former finance director realized that cities were going to need to act more like a business. They were going to need to track their costs better in a way they never have before. The voters had just told them, "We want you to act more like a business." And so, they realized that cities were going to need to be able to identify how much a cost provides services to their customers, which they really didn't need to do before. And so, started this company that really pioneered the concept of matching revenues with cost. Over the last almost forty years, next year is our fortieth year, we've done this for over two hundred fifty different agencies in five different states. I myself have been doing this for almost twenty-nine years and worked in over a hundred different agencies and have done hundreds of these such reports. So, what did we do? We really recast the city budget as if it were a business. Government does a great job of, governmental accounting does a great job of saying how much it costs for each department. Lays out the cost, lays out the accounts, but it doesn't do a very good job of identifying how much it costs provides services to your customers. So, we had to refocus that and turned it into more of a business model. So, you won't see a city manager service in here. You won't see a finance service because they're overhead support for the, the people that are providing services to the public, to their, to your customers. And so, we know when, when we go to a grocery store and buy a can of corn, that when we're paying for that can of corn, that, that includes the cost of the farmer. That includes the cost of the distribution and that truck driver to get that corn to you and the, and the people at the grocery store and, and the checker in front of you. We know that instinctively that when we buy that, we're covering all those things. We've really done that same thing here. When we're identifying what a cost provides that service, it includes all those things, those levels of support that allow that person providing that service to be able to provide that service. Another thing we did, we matched revenues to cost. Again, where the voters told us to act more like a business. You're not going to stay in business very long if you don't know how much a cost provides those services to your customers and be able to match revenues to those costs. So, what did we do? How did we do it? We started with what are the services that the city's providing? And that may sound simple, but we started with the city's fee schedule, but there's a whole bunch of services that the city provides that aren't on that fee schedule. So, we sat down with each and every department and went through that list and added things to the list, added things that I've seen other places, added things for the department and say, "Hey, we do this also." And made sure we identified everything that's been provided by every department. We then took, took a look at the budget. We took a look at the salaries. But most importantly, we spent the most time identifying where people spend their time. Once we identify that, what services they're providing, who's providing them, how much time? And we sat down in the planning department, for instance, and broke down the steps. The application comes to the counter. It gets distributed to various departments and various people within the department. There, there's a site visit. There's a back and forth with the applicant. There's a planning commission report that needs to be prepared, a planning commission PowerPoint that needs to be prepared. Sometimes it goes to city councils, everything, the preparation related to that. We identified that all those steps and how much time and of whom it takes to provide that service for all these various planning services. So, we went through that and we went through that and we went through that, as staff will attest, because they were the ones at the table. They were the ones spending time and making sure that this was good information. Because we identified how much time was spent, how many of these are you doing? So, we can roll up into total time and now we've allocated out percents of people's time. We've allocated out fifty percent of this planner. Does that make sense? If it does, great. What are they spending the other fifty percent of their time on? Whether it be time at the counter or advanced planning stuff or overhead stuff? Because we identified one hundred percent of the time of all, all employees, all positions within the city. So, there's, some of them are going to be providing services to other parts of the organization, overhead services. Some of them are going to be providing services to the public and some of that will be community-supported services. Some of that will be personal choice services and we'll talk about that in a moment, the difference between the two. But everyone's doing something and we want to identify one hundred percent of the time of everyone. And so, that was a two, three, four month process where we went through that process with staff, had meeting, came back a couple weeks later, had another meeting where they got to think about it and make some changes. As I, as I said, we categorized between community-supported and personal choice, but we took that time data and matched it up with a fully allocated hourly rate for every position. So, we started with the salaries. We added in the fringe benefits. There's general operating expenses within every department. But there's also citywide overhead that came from a cost allocation plan where we had a very detailed report, which is thicker than this, that identifies how we allocated out the administrative costs. So, in finance, we sat down, we said, "Okay, what are the services you're providing?" And one of them is the accounts payable service, paying the bills, the city's bills. And we spread that back to the departments based on how many payables every department has. So, there was a fair allocation of those costs at, back to each department. So, every department is only bearing the cost, the overhead costs that it's, it's actually receiving. So, we went through that process. We developed department overhead, where there's department, the people within the department that are providing support to other parts of the department and sometimes division overhead. So, at the end of the day, we had a fully allocated billing rate, a business billing rate for every position in the city. We matched that up with the time and now we know what a cost provide these services. So, then we sat back down with the departments again, said, "Here's how much these services cost. Here's how much you're currently charging. Here's how much you would need to charge to recover one hundred percent of the cost." In most cases, I went in and said, "Let's recover one hundred percent of the cost. Let's let the council make the policy decision as to whether or not they want to recover one hundred percent of the cost." So, most of the recommendations you'll see in here will have one hundred percent cost recovery. One hundred percent cost recovery of that full billing cost. Part of what we want to do here is make sure that we're, we're recommending fees that fall within some voter-approved initiatives. Proposition four, which allows cities to charge the costs reasonably borne, but not more than the costs reasonably borne. Proposition two eighteen, which, which limited what you could do for property-based fees. And then Proposition twenty-six, which said you couldn't charge a fee if the person paying that fee is not the one receiving the service. So, there's a couple of services in there I know that's, that is, that there may, many members of the community are looking at with the alcohol education and enforcement and tobacco education and enforcement that fall under Proposition twenty-six because these are fees that one, one group is paying the fee and another group is receiving the service. So, we did not recommend fees for that for that reason, that the voters have said in two thousand and ten, "You can't charge a fee for this" and we want to make sure we're not recommending fees that would fall, that would be ruled illegal. So, we still identify the cost, of course, because these costs are occurring. We just identified it as a community-supported service or a tax service.
Can I ask a question? What you just said, so we, we, the city has a tobacco retailer permit fee. What you just said, did you say that that's not legal with Proposition twenty-seven or can you clarify that?
There's two parts to it. There's the regulatory piece where the business permits and there's an extra review that's being done because they're a tobacco retailer. And the, the tobacco retailer is receiving that service, receiving that inspection and that review and they're paying a fee for that. Separately, there's the education and the enforcement piece. And that right now, the, I believe, the tobacco is, is funded through a grant and, and the alcohol is, is waiting for a funding source. But it's that second piece, that education enforcement piece, that I argue falls under Proposition twenty-six.
Thank you.
All right, let's talk about community-supported services versus personal choice services, tax services versus fee services. Community-supported services are things that when people say, "That's what my tax dollars pay for", this is what their tax dollars pay for, for things like police and parks and streets. Things where there is no, like, there's no way to charge a fee even if you were allowed to, but it typically benefits the community as a whole. It's those things that by their nature are benefiting the whole community. Personal choice services, customer is identifiable, the service is measurable, so there's a, an actual way to charge if you want to. But most, most importantly, it benefits an individual or group. It doesn't benefit the community as a whole and only, only a small portion of the community is receiving the benefit of that service. But you still may subsidize. Like I said, Prop four says you can't charge more than the costs reasonably borne, but you can charge less if you want to. That's the policy call that we're, we're going to ask you to make. If there's fees in here that are charging more than the cost currently, you need to lower those fees. And so, if you do nothing else, you will have to lower those fees. There are others, many more, of course, that we're, we're saying that the costs are not, the costs are higher than the fee and therefore we need to increase the fee. But it's, it's up to you as to whether or not you want to subsidize certain areas. And there's going to be areas that are currently subsidized, like recreation, that you're going to want to continue to subsidize. So, I'm kind of a, a picture person myself. And so, just kind of looking at the same idea of community-supported versus personal choice, taxes and, and versus fees. Taxes and grants, the circle in the upper left-hand portion, limited by Proposition thirteen with property taxes. Fees in the upper right-hand portion, where the voters have allowed you to charge fees up to the cost in the, under Prop four. In a perfect world, taxes and grants match up with community-supported services. Fees match, match up with personal choice services. But to the extent that the fees aren't high enough to pay for these personal choice services that are being provided, the services are being provided, the costs are occurring, just the question of who's going to pay for it. Well, then there's a leakage of tax dollars to support that difference between the fee amount and the tax amount. So, we, we showed about twelve point five million dollars in subsidies. Things that are fee services that are less than what the, the fees are, are bringing in. And so, to the extent that we ask you to increase fees, it lowers that number and now you have more money to spend on community-supported services that only taxes can pay for. And so, what we're also saying with that, with that upper right-hand corner is that, that little, the red stripe area is the tax support now for fees. To the extent that you lower that twelve point five million dollar number, the community-supported services is able to have that extra tax dollar. So, again, taxes are, the, the services are occurring. The question now is who's going to pay for it? If the fee payer is not paying for it, the only other place to go is the taxpayer. Taxpayer is the one who's making up that difference. Now, of course, there's a difference between a subsidy and what we're saying will be a recommended revenue that comes out of the recommendations in this report. Because they're much different numbers. Twelve point five, but we're saying possible new revenue of about two point eight. So, if you follow every recommendation in this report, we think you'll get about two point eight million dollars in new revenue a year. And most importantly, you have, now have two point eight million dollars in taxes to be able to spend on things that only taxes can pay for, like police and parks and streets. Now, why the difference? The big reason is going to be recreation subsidized, currently subsidized, going to continue to be subsidized or you won't have a recreation department. And in the neighborhood services area, there's certain fees in there that, that we're not recommending revenues. They have fees, but we, we're trying to be conservative in our, in our fee revenue recommendations. So, when it comes to graffiti abatement and code enforcement and animal control, we're not recommending, we're not suggesting any new revenue, even though we are recommending some changes to the fees. We want to be more conservative in what we're recommending there. So, those are the two big reasons why there's a difference between that twelve point five million dollar number and that two point eight million dollar number. I would like at this point to walk you through the report. It's a big report. There's a lot of little numbers in there and, and I used to kid people who couldn't read it when I was younger and now I'm one of those people, so you have to bear with me at some point. But if we go through the report, there are table contents at the beginning. But after that, there's about fifty pages of text with some summary schedules. And if I can get you to turn to page thirty-three of the text, so you'll see in the lower right-hand corner, page thirty-three, should say community development services in the, on that page. And so, for each broad area here, there'll be the detail. So, you should have this schedule. So, yeah, thirty-three. So, you see a list of community development services and actually continues on to the second, third, fourth, and fourth page. So, for every service that's in this book, there'll be this S number, this line item that you see here. So, for instance, that first one there, you see S zero zero one conditional use permit for commercial industrial. And you see that the total fee revenue based on the current fee is twenty-seven thousand dollars. The next column is that we're showing a total cost of seventy-one thousand dollars. So, it's currently being subsidized at the tune of about forty-four thousand dollars per year or about thirty-seven percent cost recovery. Now, if you're saying to yourself, "Why does it cost seventy-one thousand dollars?" If you go past Appendix A and go to Appendix B and look for S zero zero one, you'll see something that looks like this. So, S zero zero one, so it's a past, past Appendix A. So, for every service in, in this report, there'll be these two matching pages. So, as I said, every service will have these two matching pages. So, you can see on the left-hand side, the department, the primary department involved. Below that, a description of the service. Below that will be this fee that the city's currently charging. Below that will be a revenue and cost comparison, both on a per-unit basis and a total or annual basis. So, we have a unit revenue under, based on the current fee of about twenty-seven hundred dollars. There's total units of ten. We're saying the city does about ten of these a year. So, therefore, our total, total revenue is twenty-seven thousand dollars. The costs come from the right-hand page and there you can see the result of all those time detailed meetings that we had with departmental staff. On the right-hand page, you can see all the positions involved in this service, how much time they're spending. So, for instance, on the first one, we have in the planning department, a senior or assistant. So for instance, on the first one, we have in the planning department, a senior or assistant planner, spending twenty seven and a half hours for a typical commercial industrial conditional use permit. And as I said, we have the detail that breaks down the steps as to what makes up that twenty seven and a half hours. And then all the other positions that are involved. These applications ti- typically tend to ta- touch a lot of people, but they also are reviewed by engineering. And so there's the engineering time in addition to the planning time on this service. That twenty seven and a half hours multiplied by that person's fully allocated hourly rate turns into forty four hundred dollars to process one of these for the planner. There's ten of these a year, so therefore we have the forty four thousand. It adds up all the costs with the bottom, you see, we have a total cost of about seventy one hundred dollars, seventy seventy one fifty for each one of these at is the cost it takes to process one of these. These are the costs that are currently occurring. There's ten of these a year, so about seventy one thousand dollars. That's where you see that seventy one thousand dollar number. Then you go back in the lower left hand page and you'll see a fee recommendation to, in most cases, recover one hundred percent of the cost. And in this case, you see seventy one fifty that we're we're recommending one hundred percent cost recovery to recover those costs, a flat fee. And you'll notice in a lot of a lot of fees where we it's there was a lot of detail and a lot of levels before, working with staff, we are these levels needed? Does it really matter if it's if it is a um less than five percent or more than five percent? And so in a lot of cases, it wasn't. So now we have one single flat fee that covers the cost instead of a more complicated detailed fee. So every service has this detail behind it. Every service shows what's the description, what's the current fee, how much you're recovering? What are the costs? Who's involved? How much time are they involved? So if you're if you're going through back in the in the text and saying, why is that seventy one thousand dollars? You can go back here and see what how we got to the seventy one thousand dollars. Now, there's some other appendices in here. The most important one will be appendix A, which is right after the text. So right after page forty eight of the text, there will be an appendix A. And appendix A shows all the current fees and all the proposed fees side by side. So for every service that we identified in here that could be a fee service. There at it easily, you could see what the current fee is and what the proposed fee is. And again, if you're wondering, why is this fee jumped up so much? Look at that S number, go to that appendix B, look at that detail, so you can see the detail for that service. All right. Now, there's more appendices at the very back of the report. Appendix C has all the tax supported services, because like I said, we identified all the costs for everything that the city is doing. And so most of what the city does is tax supported. At the end of the day, a very a small percent of this of city cost are supported by fees. Most of it, of course, comes from taxes and police and parks and streets and all the other various things, and they're detailed in appendix C. Appendix D has the building and safety fees, so we there's a we're making changes and recommending increases to the building and safety fees. So all that detail is at the very back in in appendix D. Appendix E has a detail of the business permits. You have a long list of the various permits, the regulatory permits that are provided to various different types of businesses that require an extra level of of review. Those are at the, you know, appendix E. Appendix F is recreation summary, and I'll come back to that in a moment. And then appendix G will be uh recommended changes to all your various fines, code enforcement fines and parking fines and so on. So that is in very small numbers in appendix G. So let me take you to appendix E. Almost at the very end of the report, go to the very go to the very end of the report and flip through a couple of pages back until you see a schedule that looks like this. So the very the very end of the report.
So you're you're dealing with the fact that you've got paths on your.
Yeah, I I understand that and it's. Yeah, that was me. Now, we we looked at recreation services also, because recreation services are services that your customers pay fees for. You're they're also community supported services. Uh they're a mix of of all of that. And recreation services are different. They they actually have a choice as to whether or not they pay that fee. Come with a building permit, you have to pay the fee. A planning application, you have to pay the fee. Code enforcement abatement warrant, you have to pay the fee. These, the customer could walk away and either not get that go get that program or go someplace else. And so the recreation staff is always having to balance how much they can charge versus how much the the market is willing to pay for those services. And so we don't, we have not recommended any specific fees for recreation services. We're asking you to think about it in a little different way and think about it more in terms of cost recovery goals. How much of these costs do you and the community feel that the each of these services should be recovering? And then it'll be what are what are they able to recover? Because you may wanna double the the adult softball fees. But if you do that, you probably won't have an adult softball program. And so that's something that will need to be kept in mind as we go through with recreation. And also with recreation on this schedule, what we've done differently is we've broken out the direct cost. The direct costs, the part time salaries, part time benefits, and the direct supplies for each of the individual programs. And not that the other costs don't occur. There's maintenance costs, there's, you know, fleet maintenance costs as well as all the overheads, which I've got down at the bottom of the schedule. But I'm asking you to focus on direct cost and set policy goals based on cost recovery goals of direct cost. Because that's that's the cost that recreation department knows. They've got a firm grasp on what their direct costs are. And they can come back to you on an annual basis and say, based on the policy, here's what we've done. We've now recovered, you asked for a sixty percent cost recovery goal of this program, I can show you, we've we've recovered sixty two percent. If you ask them to add on all the overheads and faci- and fleets and and facility cost, that becomes a much more daunting exercise. And at the end of the day, it doesn't really matter, because if we add all those costs in, well, our cost recovery goals could be lower. Because we're still only able to recover what the market's willing to bear. So as we go through this discussion with 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 you about recreation services, we may wanna have a separate discussion just talking about recreation. Because your recreation program right now is it it fits within what I see in most cities as far as their cost recovery. It's it's recovering about forty five percent of its direct recreation program cost, and that's well within the norm of what I see. But the discussion needs to be had as to, are you comfortable with that? Are you happy with that? Do you feel that there's other services that should be subsidized and other services that should be paying more? And that's what comes down to a separate discussion than the one I hope to have with you about all the other fees. So that is it from my perspective, in that our job was to provide you information that you could now make policy decisions about. Uh we've done that. We've provided all these various different costs of the services. We have identified what are the costs that are occurring? What are the costs that are happening today? What are the services being provided? Now it's a question of who's gonna pay for it? We've identified how much the taxpayer is paying for it today. You will decide through your policy decisions how much the taxpayer is gonna pay for it going forward.
I think we've had that discussion in the past about something that's benefiting an individual versus something that's benefiting the community. And that um uh that you gotta hit that, you gotta hit that balance when you start talking about certain types of uh of amenities or developments or things of that in nature within the community. Uh I was talking about this uh with a with a fella this morning, and he said, I don't wanna have to pay for his patio covering. You know, so I mean, that's how rudimentary it got down to.
And right now he is?
Yeah, so. Okay.
Oh, you have a question? I'm looking at your fee that you gave us as an example, the CUP fee on reference number S zero zero one. That fee that is recommended, seven thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Did you see the convoluted line application that we have? Or there are like fifteen different fees? There's a base fee, fee by square footage, computer fee, GIS fee, and others that I don't recall. Did you take that into account, or is this recommended fee, the seven thousand one fifty, the base fee plus all the other fees?
That's correct. That's correct.
That is for, this is the base fee plus all the other fees?
Yes.
I think I think I'm having a little issue with the sticker shock, I guess you could call it, with the 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 jump in price in some of these fees, and I'll I'll go over in here. And and why they're concerning to me is just, for example, like our current fee is listed as.
What are you looking at?
For variance. So for variance, it's seventeen fifty per application. Under the recommended fee, it goes to forty one hundred and five dollars.
What number are you on? So it kinda got the same page?
S zero one nine.
Zero one nine?
Yeah, and I'll just go through a few of them, like, you know, the ones that just have a big jump, like large family daycare permit. Hundred, right now, it's a hundred and fifty per application for a seventy five yearly renewal. And then the new price is gonna be six hundred and seventy five dollars with a four hundred and twenty five renewal. And then another one that sticks out is the uh is the appeal. Well, here's another one, special event permit. Right now, we're we're charging seventy five dollars per an application plus seventy five dollars after the first day for a for a special event permit. Now, for people that are gonna have a special event, that price goes to eleven hundred dollars and sixty dollars, or one thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, plus the cost for engineering and the staff, fully located at hourly rates. Additional animal permits, right now it's a hundred and fifty with a thirty five dollar renewal. Recommended fee, six hundred and sixty five dollars with a renewal at six hundred and sixty five dollars. These just, these are really, really high. And there's another one that that jumps out for the appeal. I forget where it went here.
S zero five one.
Sure about that?
S zero five one.
Yeah. So I mean, a lot of these these fees aren't just a small increase, they're four or five times what they currently are. And you know, to me, that comes across as not being very business friendly and, you know. If somebody wants to make an appeal to the city council, I think right now it's seven hundred and fifty bucks, which is reasonable. And I think that gives anyone an honest chance to go before the council and show that they have a problem. But I think it's like the new fee is like forty one hundred dollars if you want an appeal.
No, that that brings even a bigger issue. Thank you for mentioning that, Councilman Bishop. Small businesses. Small startup businesses that want to go through a CUP process to sell alcohol or any other use that requires a CUP uh process. Seven thousand dollars for a mom and pops uh business.
So this is this is one of those things we've talked about in the past with um having that CUP split up between because uh if a guy's adding uh maybe a tobacco use or something at at an existing store, he doesn't all, we're not gonna be enco- uh encountering all those things. So I think that there's, like, in some of those cases, there might be uh like a minor use permit. As opposed to the full blown.
Yeah, let me let me uh let you know that the city did actually do that for CUP processes for restaurants. Instead of charging the full fee of whatever amount it was, I don't recall. It was reduced to about fifteen hundred dollars for a use, like an existing restaurant that wants to sell beer and wine. That fee was reduced because it's just a use. There's no construction associated. It's a much simpler uh process, staff report. Um but with this fee structure, I don't see how small businesses are gonna be able to grow.
I think that's gonna end up becoming a policy decision on our part. We just asked him to do the math.
I know, and I was I was thinking to propose to see if we can have an incentive program where ci- ci- city residents that want to start up a business, they can have, you know, uh through an economic development program, reduce fees so that we can support that entrepreneurship for city residents that they want to open up a business in the city and, you know, provide employment, those kind of things. Like we do with the water park. City residents pay a lower fee than non-city residents going to dry town. That's a policy issue. Maybe that's also something that we need to weigh in with our legal department. So that's something that is possible to do.
Yeah, I think this, I think this gives, I think what this is doing is they're merely telling us, this is what uh is going, this is this is the current state of affairs. This is what we're paying for. This is what each person in the city is subsidizing somebody else to do. So I think that at some point, uh the you're right, uh things like the appeals. Uh I think, you know, first of all, you do realize that if somebody comes to you, you can appeal it and there's no charge. You know that, right? So if so if somebody makes a valid, strong argument to an individual council member, that council member can can bring that up and appeal a planning commission decision before the the rest of it.
I get that, but not everyone, not everybody knows that or has access to a council member.
How does that help the resident who built a room addition through a matter of exemption? And then it gets denied and it gets told to appeal the the decision by staff. Now, now it is seven hundred and fifty dollars. I think that is too much for a person that wants to have a room addition.
Exactly.
And then now it's five thousand dollars with what is being proposed. I understand the concept. I understand it's just what the reality is out there. This is what has been subsidized. But I think that we have to think of what the impact is gonna be on our city residents and our city businesses.
Well, I think that, again, we asked the staff to tell us what the numbers are. I think that we're our obligation now is to take this home and do a little bit of homework. Uh gonna take, I mean, there's there's a, every single one of these things, I can point to three different ways to do every one of these. Uh there's some of these appeals are like, um when people want to appeal a uh a decision. If you are within the five hundred feet radius, where your rate is lower. And if you're outside that five hundred foot radius, where it's not an immediate neighbor, you're you're paying a going rate or then some. So those are those are the kinds of policy level decisions. We can take a look at each and every one of these. And and I think what we need to do now, we need to come back, we need to individually engage the staff on what our thoughts are on this. And then we bring this back so that we can make a decision about what changes do do we wanna make? We're not being asked to make any changes tonight. This is an informational meeting.
Yeah.
This is merely the staff telling us what we've asked.
It gives the public time to respond to this too, because what it's saying is, let's say he wants to make a room addition. Should everybody in this room pitch in with their taxes to help him build his rooms?
The neighbors with the the neighbor's panty on.
That's that's what we've been doing with our with ours, our um our helping with these these permits. So this is just saying, this is what it costs. Should the person who's getting the individual benefit bear the full burden of that cost? Or should we take taxpayers' money and reduce those fees so that he can build a room addition? And this is something that we have to engage the public in, and let the public have some say regarding this. So this gives us time as council people to read this report in detail and let the public have say whether or not they want us to continue to subsidize some of these fees at the taxpayer's expense, or if the person who's building the room should pay the full fee and takes the take those tax dollars and do after school programs or parks.
Exactly. So I wanna I wanna make sure also that this is circulated, uh not just a note that it's available at city hall and at the library. I wanna make sure that this gets over to the BIA. I know they don't have a local office, it's down below now. Uh but I wanna make sure that the chambers of commerce get it, uh the board of trade gets it, uh you know, the and and other interested, uh the the grocers association, the things like that, you know? And make sure that that this is available so that we can get that feedback.
Absolutely, and and our intention is to, again, begin the discussion tonight, um get the initial feedback from the council in direction. Obviously, we need to kind of bring this back to you in a longer study session, an hour, you know, to try to digest this amount is, you know, certainly not sufficient. One of the things, uh just in the sake of time, just wanted to go through just a couple more slides, uh so that there is opportunity for public comment to you. The development services department did uh just a quick comparison of fees, um looking at three different examples. So trying to evaluate what what these fees constitute in terms of the overall cost of development. So using the example of a three thousand square foot house, it has a total valuation of two hundred and sixty six thousand. The impact fees represent, I can't read, the about six percent, so about fifteen thousand in cost uh to that overall cost of development. The permit fees that we're talking about tonight currently would be about six thousand seven hundred dollars towards that. Uh if you take that and apply the proposed changes, the increase would go from about six thousand seven hundred to about eight thousand eight twenty, but still would remain about two percent of the overall cost of that development. A similar example uh that they provided would be for the development of a hundred and twenty three room hotel. Uh the current, you know, plan check and permit fees would be about a hundred and twenty three thousand. Uh with the proposed fees, uh would be about a hundred and sixty thousand, but still representing about but still, uh, representing about two percent of the overall, uh, cost of that development. And then just a third example of a three, thirty thousand square foot industrial building. Total valuation of one point, um, almost six-nine million. Uh, about seven percent, uh, cost for the impact fees, about one percent, um, for the, uh, plan check and, and permit fees. Just to give a little bit of a visual of what percentage these actually, um, constitute towards the overall cost that, that, uh, developing any of these particular projects.
And that's important to keep in mind, it, there are some large jumps in here. Um, how it affects individual developments is really a very small percent of their total cost. It's not something developers care about, frankly, they care about time, they care about how quickly you can process that. They'll pay more, there's many fees that have expedited and, or doubled the fee, and they can't get it fast enough.
I'll tell you, I, I came from that environment, alright? And for twelve years, uh, I was on one side of the table, and for the last seven, I'm on the other side of the table. And then, you're absolutely right, if they know that they can get that inspection tomorrow, and they're gonna get one inspection and they're gonna be done, they don't care what it costs, it's time is money, and money is money. And, and, uh, so that's, that really becomes a huge issue for these guys. And I'm gonna tell you, and looking at some of these fees and stuff like that, um, having come from a large city down below, I could tell you some of these fees are not nearly what some of these guys are charging down there.
Yeah, 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 absolutely, it's, and it's definitely well within the, kind of the, the sweet spot, as it were, for, for this size city. Uh, when I go, go other places, and so the fees aren't out of line when you compare, uh, those kinds of things. But part of the reason there's a big jump is that it's been a long time since the city's gone through this process. And so there's a lot of catching up to do, uh, there's been years of unconscious subsidies. And now we're asking you to make decision on conscious subsidies, that, yeah, there, this we wanna subsidize, we wanna subsidize appeals because there's a value to the community and members to be able to come to and, and talk to us about their issue. Great, um, and so it's making those decisions as to, this is important enough to use tax dollars. Cause now we can't spend it on police and parks and streets, because we've sent, we've spent it to help subsidize this. Is this important enough to subsidize that? And that's what the decision, that, as I think you all grasp, what we're asking from you.
Well, to me, just based on where these fees are at and what the recommendation is, they seem, they, they seem a lot higher. And I think it's definitely, we, we definitely need to go back and take a, a closer look at these numbers and, and see what it's gonna take to.
But maybe we didn't keep up with it all along, that's the other issue we gotta think about.
Well, that's, that's dropping the ball, but now, you know, we gotta see what we can do to hopefully run a more efficient government organization. Because a hundred and fifty dollar front yard landscaping plan check fee to six hundred and forty dollars for a landscaping plan check fee is just, it's a lot. I don't really think it's fair to the, to the resident or the.
Well, that's based on the current condition, that's the, that's where we have to have that discussion. Do we wanna have that? Do we wanna have that in-depth of a, of an inspection? Or do we wanna just have this an over-the-counter, easy deal? So, again, that becomes policy, this is based on current set of facts. And this is what we're doing, and this is what it costs to do it, and this is what isn't getting paid.
Well, I think we definitely need to go back and take a look at what it's gonna take to run a more efficient government.
I think it's, that's in processes.
Yeah.
I think we're gonna, the staff will be.
Point to have that discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, as Ann mentioned, hopefully we, we're able to come back and have a more in-depth study session where we could spend a couple hours and, and go through and answer all those questions and make sure you feel comfortable with the.
Well, now that we, now that we have the numbers, I think now we have something to look at, to think about.
Great, thank you.
Again. Yeah, was there anybody who wanted to specifically addri- address this, but knowing that this is just a, uh, preliminary report? Did you fill out, do we have any speaker slips?
Yes, we have two.
Okay, two minutes, cause we got another meeting to start, so.
Good evening, Mayor. We came here, we prepared documents, we sent them to every single one of you earlier today, uh, expressing our position, uh, regarding the cost report. And essentially, our position was based on, um, uh, our understanding that alcohol and tobacco fees were not gonna be included in this particular report, yet. So because of that, that we, uh, came here today to recommend that you direct staff to, uh, develop a administrative programs fee specifically geared towards alcohol establishments and not wait any longer. And the reason we're proposing you take that bifurcated, separated from this process is because your own law and the document that we sent to you quotes it, um, states that you're supposed to have done that as of September second, two thousand fifteen, that was four years ago. Four years and two months, four years and two months later, that administrative fee is not in place. So, we're here today to ask you, please, separate that administrative fee from this larger process. Let's get this fee going quickly, um, and let's, uh, let's work to s- put the structure together, then implement it, then enforce it.
Thank you. Very good. Hi, can you state your name, please?
I'm Rosie, I'm here to just give you, um, a draft that was put together by an attorney that specializes on alcohol type fees. And, um, so it's also from twenty fifteen, that's when it was first drafted. But, um, it's got a lot of different, um, examples. So I brought plenty of you, plenty of them for you guys all to look at. And, um, it is, it is just for, um, helping with, um, compliance checks, okay, so.
Alright, thank you, I think that that's still on our agenda, I think this is separate, kind of a little bit of separate topic. Okay, is there anything else, do you have any other city clerk? Okay. Alright, okay, good. Alright, so we got about, uh, three minutes left here, so we've all been in here for two hours already. So we're gonna take a three, about a three-minute break before we get started, okay? And then we'll start with our seven o'clock meeting, alright? Thank you. Okay, we're gonna get started with our, uh, seven o'clock meeting. Grab a seat or grab a wall? Okay, city clerk, could we, uh, let's see, we do a pledge of allegiance. Huh?
What all the reserved seats for?
Well, it's, this, there's a lot of seats here, a lot of seats up front.
Yeah, just ignore the reserve sign, you guys.
If we're, if we're holding a seat for them and they're not here, you're here. I see a boy scout uniform out there sneaking, try to hide the back, uh, you're not gonna hide, come on up here, sir. I need you to do the pledge of allegiance for us. You got a sore throat? Oh, nice try, alright. Yeah, good answer. Um, okay, who's the senior, who's the senior guy on the crew here? He's coming anyhow, alright, good. Alright, now I got it. Alright, so ladies and gentlemen, what we're gonna do is we're gonna have a pledge allegiance in a moment, uh, of silence and honor of our troops and other people. Um, let me just, before you get started here, I wanna read something in the record here. We're gonna be, um, we're gonna be closing our meeting in a memory of a couple of people tonight. One is Tom Ward, he was a local attorney, he was, um, uh, the council of record for many agencies up here, including, uh, some that, uh, I am on at this time, and other council members, uh, Animal Valley Transit Authority and a number of other agencies, and we've, uh, lost him since our last meeting. Especially, uh, important, uh, and a significant loss to our community here, uh, was Kevin Hennessy. Kevin served as the city's contracted electrician for thirty-four years. First as an employee, as a city contractor, and then later with his own business, Hennessy Industries. His main service was providing temporary power to over five thousand events from nineteen eighty-five to twenty nineteen. That number could actually be found, that's, well, it was just what could be found in our city records, uh, it's gotta be a lot more. Kevin, however, was, uh, much more than just an electrician, he's a right-hand man to all he worked with, providing his assistance wherever he was needed to help make an event or show run smoothly. He was always a phone call away with guidance or insight to an issue or a problem. He was the first guy you called when he had big ideas or plans, because he'd immediately start processing it, to take it on logistically and turn those plans into the reality. Even some of our crazy ideas, he managed to make them work. Over the years, Kevin provided service to events like the Fall Festival, Thursday Night on the Square, Spring Fest, Grace Fest, Easter Celebration, Starlight Concerts, Palmdale Amphitheater Concerts, the Jazz and Wine Festival, Family Movie Nights, the Fireworks Displays, Sundown at, uh, Drytown Water Park, the AV Wall Events, Kaleidoscope, the Music Festival. If you's had something going on here in Palmdale, and as well as next door, it's probably Kevin that was, uh, working the magic behind the, uh, boards back there and dragging all that cable out. Uh, along with, uh, his right-hand man and his, uh, and his lady back there, so can you guys stand up, please? That's his son and his wife right there. So Kevin made it his business to look out for the city, he worked alongside with our special event staff in keeping the grounds and the patrons safe. He had a special relationship with the Parks, Recs and Culture Department, and he and his son Kyle, uh, are regarded as city family. We're gonna miss Kevin in a lot of, a lot more ways than we even know at this time. And we're gonna have a tree planted in his memory at the Palmdale Amphitheater. So Mondays days, you're gonna go out there, you're gonna see a tree and, uh, and that's gonna be the, uh, Kevin Hennessy tree. So let's keep those folks, along with anybody else that, uh, we might have, uh, lost. And any, and, um, and any, uh, special, uh, special thoughts that you have for anybody else, let's, uh, let's, uh, do that after the pledge. So, young man, what troop are you with? Five-five-five, that's an excellent troop, uh, and, uh, are you the, uh, SPL or what's your rank over there?
Uh, I currently have, uh, have no position.
Okay, I'm sure you will soon, so, alright, so, sir, it's, it's all yours.
Okay. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and, uh, let's give one more hand to Kevin's family here, thank you very much. Alright, so I have a friend of mine that's come up here and was very insistent on this. So I kinda fell on the sword, usually I'm the one giving presentations and recognizing people for their accomplishments. Tonight, we've got Laura Morales, she's the, uh, exquisite, uh, regional director for the League of California Cities, that's a group that helps us track what's going on in Sacramento. Um, and maintaining, uh, local community control on issues. And, uh, Laura's in charge of the, uh, Inland Empire and the Desert Mountain Division. And, um, she's actually coming up here and, uh, she's gonna talk about me, so.
Okay, perfect. Um, again, my name is Laura Morales, and I'm the Regional Public Affairs Manager with the League of California Cities. And it's my honor to be here today to honor this. the League of California Cities, and it's my honor to be here today to honor this gentleman here, who is one of my favorite guys, and I don't know, I can depend on him for any policy issues, yes you are, you are still my favorite guy. Uh, you know, whenever I need him, whenever California needs him, whenever our legislators need him, um, he's always there to jump on board, to call somebody, yell at somebody, or say thank you for something they've done. So, I'm gonna read a little bit about what this certificate is, he actually completed the Torch Program, um, and this is what I'm gonna say about this. Uh, the Mayor's and Council Members Department honors the hard work and dedication of mayors and council members through the Mayors and Council Members Academy Leadership Levels, also known as the Torch Program. The Torch Pro, the program is a valuable educational path for mayors and council members to continue professional development and enhance knowledge and skills to better serve the public. That's why he's a great public servant. There are three levels, one, uh, level one is leadership, level two is advanced leadership, and level three is leadership in action. He has completed all three levels, can we give him a round of applause for that? It's not easy, there's a lot of work that goes into these things, he likes that. Today, we recognize Steve Hoffbauer, the Mayor of Palmdale, who has reached the leadership in action, congratulations for that. This is the highest level obtained at the academy, these individuals have...
Relax now?
You can relax now. These individuals have completed everything at the advanced leadership level, and they have also served at least five years, five years or more, as a city elected official, have completed at least five league conferences, and have participated in at least five league and non-league, uh, leadership activities. So, what has Steve done? And I'll just say, whole block, what's, has Steve not done? Um, on my end, I just wanna say thank you, because Steve has not only served as the president of the Desert Mountain Division for two years, he's also serves on the league board of directors for the league at the state level, he's also part of the leadership at the Desert Mountain Division, and he's a good advocate for community, for California, um, in general. So, Steve, it is my honor to present you this beautiful certificate of completion for your hard work and dedication to California cities, your city, your community, and the division, the Desert Mountain Division, and the League of California Cities in general. Thank you very much for all that you do.
So, Laura and Megan kinda pushed me, they said, "Listen, uh, you're on a lot of boards, you're on the policy committees, you keep doing all this stuff, why don't you total it up and write it down?" I literally scratched it out on a piece of paper, and Megan called me back, and she said, "Uh, you know what, I think you actually completed everything," and then some. So, she said, "Fill it out properly, and let's take a look at it," and then the next thing I know, I'm up in front of a couple of thousand people up in Sacramento getting a, or in Long Beach, uh, getting a certificate and, and a very nice picture, so. Uh, I, I wanna thank the League, and I, and I wanna thank my colleagues especially here, uh, and the, and the residents of the community that allow me to do this for them, uh, as well as my wife that tolerates me being gone all the time, to do this. You have no idea how many meetings, and every one of these organizations, every one of these committees, has got a subcommittee, and each subcommittee's got a working group, and each working group's got a sub-something or other going on out there, but it doesn't get done without the support of the rest of my colleagues up here, uh, to be able to do that, so, anyways, uh, and...
I wanna thank the council, city manager, and the community for allowing Steve to do this, because without his leadership, we wouldn't be able to get done all the work that we do, being on policy committees, um, traveling numerous times, and to his wife too, who I absolutely adore, um, and I like having her around, but, um, you know, she, it's a, it's a lot of travel, it's a lot of work that goes into this, a lot of time away from your family, work, so, Steve, you've done a phenomenal job with representing your city and the division, so thank you very much.
Okay, so let's get to picture and move on. You good? Aparazzi.
I brought my own photographer.
There you go. And then Laura, Laura took like a two-hour drive to come out here, so let's thank her for all the work that she's done. So, when they told me they were gonna do that, I said, "Well, you know what, we had somebody else that's done one of the things that I've always wanted to do, and because of all the work that Laura's got me doing, I've never had the time to do it." And I'd like to ask Councilmember Correio to come down, please. So, Mr. Correio has completed an intensive set of, uh, training down at that other school, USC. Where's it, do we got the, sort of thing over there, do we have that? Um, this is the USC Soul Price School, a public policy executive education program. Uh, that program is really intensive, it's not just sitting there and listening to a bunch of professors and scholars babble at you all day, it's a very immersive program, uh, there's a lot of work that goes into it, you have to make presentations, you have to analyze policies and things like that, like some of you saw when we were debating some of these issues here a little bit earlier under a discussion item, and, uh, I gotta tell you something, the, that, that really helps bring things to a, a, a different level when you're able to participate in programs like that, and, um, uh, you gotta, now what happened here, we had, what happened to this little framed thing from USC? Oh, yeah, that's the one we wanna see, that's just the one with my signature on it there. Look at this thing right here. Now, in addition to, to having a full-time job, having a bunch of kids, and being a soccer coach, he's gotta go out there every weekend, and spend his weekends down at USC, and, uh, again, some of the, some of the instructors down there are phenomenal, I, I, I've worked with some of them, on some of these other committees and things like this, guys like Frank Zerunian and some of those guys, so, uh, you wanna add a little something to that, Mr. Correio?
Well, thank you for doing this, I was really expecting to be recognized for this achievement. Uh, it is a great program, you get to talk with other council members, and school board members, and water agency, and even town council members. One from our very own, and, um, right here, a one that called, she, she participated, she's with the, um, town council, Little Rock Town Council. Uh, so, it was a great program, great exercises by professors from USC, not only from professors from USC, but from other states, from other states, they came and taught different kinds of, um, thinking about how to make decisions, how to, uh, put yourself into other people's shoes, and see how it would affect, uh, the way that you make actions at the dais, and it's just a great opportunity. I recommend it to all of my council members here to be able to participate sometime, because it is really, really a great program. Uh, it is a big sacrifice, I had to miss a couple of soccer practice with my kids, and a couple of soccer games, but well worth it, and they understood that I missed their games because I had to go to USC. They were very happy about that, and very, very happy to do that, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You have that hanging on your wall tomorrow. So, we have Jesse, who have you got here tonight, where'd Jesse go? There's Jesse, and look at this baby, my wife is probably cringing right now. Every week, well, every, every time we do this, she's positive I'm bringing home a new baby. This is our homeless dog of the month? Look at this baby, yeah, I mean, she, she, oh, man, look at this. So, Jesse, come here. She's not gonna go home, I don't know all this nonsense. This is Jupiter? Yeah. Tell us about Jupiter.
Evening, sir, congratulations. Jupiter, Jupiter is a altered male, two-year-old pit bull. Came to us homeless on the twenty-third of October, and we've been caring for him ever since. Uh, he is ready to go to a good home, and be somebody's, uh, couch potato. Cause, uh, our volunteers, when they start socializing the adoptable dogs, they leave notes in, and, uh, his notes were, uh, a little bit confusing, because he's easy to leash, you know? He warms up to you very fast, yeah? He, uh, he likes other dogs, and gets, you know, doesn't react to the other animals. He, they say he walks cautiously, well, that's his being timid, but, once he warms up, look at him, you know, he has a very, very, uh, unique personality, but, uh, he loves being pet, he's very sweet, and he really, uh, I guess he had a kennel mate that didn't have any interest in, but, right now, he's by himself, um, he just loves to be scratched. He's a really good dog. Yep, you do know the right spots, look at that, look how calm he is now. But he's available from us, um, like I said, he's got all his shots for the year, he's chipped and he's altered, he's, uh, I guess he was altered this week, but, um... But he make a good, uh, couch pet, um, good play, uh, playful dog when he wants to get playful. Take him out, uh, on walks in the evening, and, uh, he'll probably just hang out with you.
And, Carrie, you still got the Palmdale Bargain Basket, uh, for...
Hold on, you're not getting away.
For any adopters of the council cute critter, or the featured pets on our Palmdale Public Safety Facebook page on Four-Legged Friday, any adopters are eligible to come into our Neighborhood Services Department and receive a goodie bag.
So, there you go, and you get a goodie bag full of stuff in addition to a nice doggie, so, uh, we've had a one-hundred percent adoption rate for every animal that we brought up here, for every animal we brought up here, and my wife is watching right now going, "God, I hope somebody takes that dog home," so, alright? And Jesse, thank you so much again for coming out, Jesse's a volunteer, if you wanna volunteer over at the animal shelter, they got a class to put you through, so just know what you're doing, uh, but, uh, it's, uh, if you're, uh, thinking about something to help the community out, this is it, man, so thank you very much for what you do, Jesse. Okay, thanks. Okay, see ya. No, stay here, he says. So, let's see, uh, Zonta, we have some Zonta folks here, anybody here know, anybody from Zonta? Come on up. I gotta tell you something, these ladies were all out, uh, the other day for the, um, Walk a Mile in Her Shoes Program, uh, prodding everybody along, and, uh, encouraging them, and just listening to the stories from some of the ladies that you had there, would break your heart, um, some of the victims of, uh, domestic violence and things of that nature, um, it's, uh, the, the work that you folks are doing right now out there in the community is critically important, and it's like I've said about, uh, uh, these programs and programs for child abuse and things like that, if we could put you out of business, I wish we could, uh, so we wouldn't have to need you, so, um... Yep, so, this is, um, Zonta International Centennial Anniversary, uh, so, uh, who's, who's a spokesperson here, wants to tell us a little bit here? Pepe?
Go ahead, Laura.
Alright.
Laura Gordon, I'm the Area Director for District Nine of, um, Zonta International, past president of the club. We are a service, international service organization where we, um, give service to people, like the domestic violence and the child, the trafficking and the child marriages, and we are one of the only, um, NGOs, non-governmental organization that's a member of the United Nations, and we've given over four million dollars to help worldwide in all the causes around.
So, when you start thinking about, when you start seeing these things for, uh, some of the different little walks and things that are going on out there, this is one you need to, this is the one you need to do, you need to be out there, you need to help support these ladies, cause they're out there to support the people, uh, you know, I, I talked with, uh, was it Tricia, the lady that gave, was speaking that day? Tanika, Tanika. And the thing that used to just flabbergast me, um, I was on the fire department for thirty-two years, and a lot of those years I was a paramedic, and, uh, Tom Lackey and I were standing there talking, and, uh, who was a highway patrolman, he'd have to deal with this from time to time as well, and the thing that used to absolutely just floor me, is we'd get out there with our engine and the rescue and the cops, and everybody'd be out there, and we'd get some woman that just had to, just got just beat up very badly, and we'd get her in a rescue and get back there, and then she'd say, "Can he come along with us?" It's like, "What, what?" You know, so, and that's, it's all about control, and it's all about showing people that, that, that you're worthy, and that, that you're a strong person, you can deal with this stuff, and you don't need to put up with that. And, so, when people end up with, and, and, for the guys too, you wouldn't believe how many times we'd go out, we'd have some guy out on the street corner, and he'd say, "Ah, I got jumped," and you look at his like fingernail scratches and stuff, "I don't know what mugger that puts fingernail scratches on ya," but the guys don't wanna admit that, and, uh, so, um, again, this is, this is one of the organizations that I wish that we could put that job out of business and let you focus on planting flowers or, or something else, and not other services other than having to do that, so, ladies and gentlemen, we got this proclamation here, I'd like the council to, uh, stand up behind her here, so we can all also show some support, and, uh...
We also have given the city council a little save-the-date card for both, um, Athena next year, and our walk back in, in October, and, um, commemorative pins, and a goodie bag from the walk last year, even though you weren't there.
I was there.
You were there. Yeah, you were there.
Okay, so, we got, we got a whole lot of wherays, and wherays, and wherays, and we're gonna move along and say, therefore, this, uh, city of Palmdale and the entire city council, uh, uh, hereby proclaims November eighth, uh, Zonta International Centennial Anniversary Day, so there you go. I noticed a lot of the guys that were in heels last year were wearing flats this year, what was behind that? Oh, okay, alright. So now, we have, um, so we, you guys know that we do a number of programs out here in, uh, Chrisan Park, uh, during the summer, so during the summer of twenty nineteen, we had a bunch of folks that were very instrumental in, uh, engaging the community and coming out. Now, this is the, is this the, uh, twenty nineteen one, is this the right one? Okay. I think you actually queued up the Ponsetlon one, right? So, we're gonna, I'm just gonna skip here, this is, uh, the one for Ponsetlon, so we'll catch, we'll catch the, uh, catch the other one here. So, um, for, in Ponsetlon, uh, what we do is, uh, we have a sister cities group, I'm the one that skipped, so you're right, City Clerk was right, the lady was right again. So, what you see here is, um, this is all part of the cultural exchange program we've done over the years, and, um, uh, every year, we have a delegation that goes down to our sister city. It's named, our, our, our square out here in back is, out front, is named, uh, for the city of Ponsetlon, and we've had that, uh, that, um, relationship now for forty-five years, and, uh, every year, they come up here, and they live with us, and they're basically embedded with our families, and in opposite years, some of us will go down there and spend time with them down there, with their families, and, um, so, over the years, we've developed some... And, um, so over the years, we've developed some really good relationships with these people, um, and some, some great, great friendships. Uh, I gotta tell you, if you don't speak Spanish, by the time you get back, you will, okay? That is, uh, that is our square, and they have one down there that is quite similar. And, um, so when you take a look at, uh, at, uh, uh, the, the value of this program is, is that we're able to go there and get a better understanding because fifty-four percent of our community is Hispanic and a good percentage of those folks are here from the state of Jalisco. And a good percentage of those folks from the state of Jalisco are from Ponsetlon, Okatlan, Tototlan, and all the other little communities that are around there, just inland from, uh, Guadalajara and right near Chapala Lake. So, um, we will, uh, we will have, uh, uh, one of the things that we like to do is, is take a look at how they're doing things, how, how some of the things they're doing is, is able to, uh, where we can better understand how our neighbors are doing things. And, um, uh, there was, uh, we went to visit one of the dairies down there. Uh, uh, it's called, uh, Los Nineteen Hermanos. And, uh, so, uh, the patriarch of that family's been really busy over the years, obviously, as has been the matriarch of that family with nineteen brothers. That's nineteen brothers what that stands for. And, um, I tell you, that was probably the most insightful thing that I saw was, uh, the complete use of resources and recycling I've ever seen in my life. This is a dairy that they grow their own corn, that feeds their cows, that makes the milk, and then they make their own bottles from the recycled stuff that they bring in. They make their own milk crates. When they're not making milk crates, you know, some of those, uh, those, uh, uh, garden chairs, those green plastic chairs? When they're all, when they're all done making milk crates, they make yard chairs, those, those green plastic chairs. Uh, they're not wasting anything because when they're done milking the cows and the cows go back out into their barns and they take all that cow poop, and you, you didn't hardly smell it, which is what just amazed me. And they took all that manure and it went out into compost piles. The compost piles went back out to the fields for the corn that fed the cows that made the milk. And they, they invented a big turntable system. Apparently that didn't get in the, in, in the video here, because Carmen, I mean, Armin cut me short. Uh, but, uh, they invented this turntable system that the cattle go into, and each one of the cows has got a transponder on it, and it measures how much milk the cows produce, and they can tell you right every, each day, what the production is. If a cow isn't feeling good, they're, they able to track that cow down and, and, uh, it's really amazing when you watch what they, they were doing down there. So, um, anyways, we wanted to show that to you, to give you a little bit of an idea of what, what goes on if you want to participate. We have some of the folks here from, uh, our, uh, sister cities group. Can you come on up here for a minute here? Come on, come on up, don't, don't, get up. And I think they have, uh, I think that, uh, one of the things that they do is, um, we go out to the, uh, uh, we spend a visit over at the fire department, and we go to the old folks home and things like that. And then, um, we, at the same time, we also, um, at the same time, the group here works with local groups here in the community and helps provide scholarships and things of that nature to kids locally in our community here. So, um, Lisa, you want to, uh, yeah, a couple of things you want to say here?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Lisa Punusami. I am the president of Palmdale Sister City. Um, Steve has, um, covered a lot of it, uh, for us, so I won't go into any more detail about that. But I want to thank you very much for inviting us to be able to present this, and thank you to the council members as well. Um, uh, also, I just wanted to add a, a couple of little things. Um, in order for us to continue our group, we do have fundraisers. And the past few years, we have put on a dance with some wonderful entertainment like La Sonora Dinamita and, uh, Juan Gabriel impersonator, for those that, who know about them. Um, and it's really, really a lot of fun. Uh, we will be having another fundraiser March fourteenth, and we hope that you will come and support us and enjoy a wonderful evening by helping us, uh, raise funds for the visitation for twenty twenty.
So I think what, what's important here that she's saying too is, is that, that the bulk of the costs that are incurred for these visitations are borne by the families and the sponsors on each side of the border as we're doing this. So that's, that's what this is all about. And each one of these people that are standing up here become ambassadors for our community down there and to ambassadors to our neighbors in this community later on. So that's, that's what's important. Um, I think Sylvia has something to say here.
Hi, good evening. Um, thank you for having us here. Um, I just wanted to share with you that I've been a member of the Sister City Association for about two years now, and, um, what I've learned in my experience is the friendships that, um, we've all grown to have with each other here in Palmdale and also with our family over in Ponsetlon, Mexico. Um, they welcomed us, um, wonderfully when we went in September. We had a very nice visit. And, um, it's just an exchange of culture. It's sharing friendships. And it's something that, um, that we've grown to, to continue over the forty-five years. And we are nonprofit, so again, we are gonna have a dance, and we hope that, you know, we can have the community's support. So, thank you very much.
So, I, um, who, who's handling that part?
Um, we, we also give back to the community here. Um, it's very important to us as a, as a group to do that. And we have a certificate of appreciation and, uh, a sponsorship that we'd like to give to Alternative to Violence Project, AVP. And is someone here to receive that? Oh, there she is. Oh, wonderful.
This is a, a small donation for your project, for all the good work that you do, and we thank you very much. And the second certificate of appreciation is for Gabriel's Neighborhood House. And this check is for your work, uh, that you do, uh, for the community, for Gabriel's Neighborhood House. Thank you.
Chuck, don't go away. No, you're gonna, you need to get in the back, because you're tall. And, and then something else, uh, I've got a, a commendation, uh, from the city of Palmdale proclamation on the forty-fifth anniversary. Um, this program was started by Dwight D. Eisenhower, right? So a lot of us in this room weren't even alive. Uh, but the whole idea, again, is cultural exchange and better understanding our neighbors. So I'd like to present this to Lisa and the group, and, uh, thank you very much for all the, uh, hard work you do in the community and for giving back to groups that are, that we're able to leverage what we're doing through these folks here, okay? So, thank you very much.
Also want to let you know that we meet every, uh, second and fourth Wednesday of the month at six P M. at Palmdale, uh, the Cultural Center, and we'd love to have you join us.
So you'll see Chuck a lot of times on, uh, Thursday night on the square. I mean, a Thursday night, uh, here, over at, uh, the park. Uh, and, uh, and, and the violence, anti-violence programs, they all do good work, so. So I apologize for skipping there. I, uh, lost my spot on my agenda here. I think we're doing the Sheriff's Department, right? Okay, who's our rep from the Sheriff's Department? Tell me what these, uh, what these characters are up to up there, huh? Hey, good stuff. I heard they did good, huh, Captain? So here's our police chief. This is Captain Schaefer. He's gonna tell us, uh, what, uh, now, these aren't explorers. It may look like it to me. I do a ride along and people say, were you riding with explorers? I said, no, 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 it just, the deputies just get younger. All, every year, they're younger. But, uh, our explorer program out here, um, a, a lot of these young men and women are gonna go on to become sheriff's deputies. Some of them are gonna find other roles in the community. But the whole key here is that they're developing these leadership teamwork skills and, um, which is really important, uh, and while they're doing this stuff, they're not out there getting in trouble. So, Cap, you want to tell us about this?
So I'm just gonna say that our explorer program is a great program. It's affiliated with the Boy Scouts. It is a great leadership program for our young students, and, uh, they not only have to go through a sixteen-week academy, eighteen-week, ooh, they grew, it extended. They're aging on us as we talk. That's right. Back in the old days, you really needed half an hour. But they, they, not only do they do the academy part, then when they come out to the post, and we have them all throughout the county, they do, enter into competitions. And so they do practice and they drill. They do tons of drills to get ready for these competitions. And that's what we're on today. And so we have some explorer advisors, and I'll let them talk about this particular competition that they did.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I'm a little tired, so I apologize. It's been a busy day. So, uh, my name is, uh, David Abanias. I'm one of the advisors along with, uh, Deputy Joseph Correia and, uh, Steve Correas. We're, all three of us were once explorers and cadets and other agencies, and we wouldn't be where we're at if it wasn't programs through like this. So it's our way of paying it forward. So these kids are, as you can tell, they're students and going to work and staying out of trouble. But every week, they're, they're volunteering about three or four hundred hours to the city of Palmdale every month. So last year is about four thousand hours. And on top of that, they're doing community events, and for this, um, competition, um, it's just one of many that they do throughout the year, and they fundraise for it, and they, they earn third place against thirty other teams. And, uh, they got another one in filling traffic stop. They got fourth place on that, but the third place, obviously, are a lot more prouder. I'm a lot more proud, so. It's a lot of hard work, and there was very, there was about twelve scenarios. And that's just, we're hoping to go to Arizona coming up in January, where that's kind of like the World Series. So we're just, um, hoping we get to go to that. That'd be awesome. This is just like our practice one for, for the big leagues. And that one is actually nationwide. We, um, throughout the nation, they, there's several, I don't know how many teams, Steve, remember? There's, it, it's a big, it's a big one. So this, this is just a small part. And here's our, uh, our, uh, second-in-command, uh, Explorer Martinez. Maybe she wants to say a little bit about her post.
Hello, my name is Marion Martinez. I'm the lieutenant of the post. Um, I just want to congratulate you guys for acknowledging our post. Um, and also the advisors, they put a lot of, uh, time and effort. They're, they're away from their families and everything. Uh, we meet every Wednesdays. Um, so they're taking away like the whole day basically to train us and help us get ready for these big competitions that we have. Um, but as Captain said, we do have an eighteen-week academy for anyone that, um, knows that, an explorer that wants to join. Um, it's eighteen weeks, every Saturday, and then after that, it's Wednesdays. And then, uh, basically training with the deputies to get these competitions, and we're also able to do ride-alongs. Um, once a week with the deputy, you're doing a full shift, eight hours with the deputy, just helping him out, um, being the right hand basically that day. So, thank you.
They, they do truly put in a lot of time and energy into the station and the community. Uh, they get some leadership skills as a result of it, so we're very proud of what they do. If anybody's out there and they're interested in the explorer program, I encourage you, please call the sheriff's station at Palmdale, and we'll put you in touch with, uh, the advisors and how you can go through the process.
There's also a fire post too, so I'll just say that. So we got, uh, Marion Martinez, Gustavo Nuno, Erica Rodriguez, Marina Cruz, Pablo Gomez, Lauren Lopez, uh, Ianni Mata, and, uh, the last one, you always give me a hard one. Mauricio Harado. They do that, right? That's good? Alright. So these kids are doing a good job. We got certificates for each one of them here. Uh, the, uh, I want you to give a hand, not only to these guys and ladies and gentlemen, uh, but also to the advisors, because again, uh, they tell you it's an hour a week, and they lie when they suck you into that. So they, they're really putting in a lot of time, uh, for these kids. And you see these kids out there for the parades, for the community events. We got stuff going on out here in the square. Anything that's going on in the community, these guys bring those kids out there, out there for trunk or treat, helping out over there. So they, 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 they're out there, and they're working hard and putting that time in, and it saves the city money, because otherwise, we'd have to go, we'd have to hire back the guys with the guns to stand around a corner when these guys are doing an absolutely outstanding job doing that. So thank you very much for what you do. Counsel, do you want to get in this picture? We get a picture with these guys, huh? Pastor Joel, I'm not gonna destroy your name again. Pastor Tim Stroup from Crosswinds, Pastor John Irving from Renaissance Movement, Pastor Titus, so, uh, from Oasis, Pastor Abner Diaz from, uh, Life Church, Chuck Murphy, Anapi Pacheco, Matt Marsar, Lovell Fleming from Advancing Communities Together, and Pastor Mike Gonzalez. So the work that these folks do, yeah, give him a hand here. So the work that these folks do here, can you help me out? Can you sort those out for me, for whoever those are? I'm gonna just mess it up. Um, and, uh, who wants to tell me about this with these guys? Somebody, who's a staff person that can help me with this? Mike Miller. I should have known. Tell us about this, Mike.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Uh, for about the past six years, uh, about six years ago, the Neighborhood Advisory Committee, um, got together and asked what we could do to kind of make a difference in Corson Park. And, uh, the members of that committee, um, thought, well, why don't we go out there during the summer and, and we'll bring some entertainment to Corson Park? So other than being, uh, not participating last summer because the park was closed, uh, the second, two Sundays of June, July, August, and September, the people that you see here standing come out to the park and for three hours provide live entertainment, um, food, activities for the kids, and it was really about bringing back, uh, um, bringing back a spark to Corson Park. Now, if you've been over Corson Park lately, you see everything that's going on. So in our community, I call them the silent, uh, servants or the silent soldiers, but they're not so silent. But they're the ones that don't look for any, uh, fanfare. They don't create any publicity. They just come out and they want to make a difference in the community. So everybody that you see here, uh, some of those days were triple digits on a Sunday afternoon, Mayor, but it didn't matter. The kids from Gabriel's House, the bands from the different churches, Chuck, Nappy, other artists in the community came out and performed, and it's really great. And so truly, when you look at this partnership that went on in the park, the city has been a huge supporter of that. Um, I want to say thank you very much to Carrie Smith, who's our Director of Reckon Culture, because she and her team have been very supportive of letting us come in and invade the park on those Sunday afternoons. And then to our community partners, uh, when they show up, it's a massive army. And actually, we, we had a good some of the summer, um, I think one, one Sunday, we had close to three hundred people there. And, um, and everybody had a blast. So next summer, we're gonna do it again. We invite everybody to come out and have a good time. And this is a way that the community is helping to change the stigma in a park that really isn't true.
You go over to the park now, you can see it's a totally different park than it was a year ago. Uh, and, uh, it's a, uh, in large part due to, uh, being able to gauge the community, engaging the neighbors, and, uh, providing that positive. You know what? If you don't have positive, then the negative takes over, right? So having the positive resources and influences in the, in the park is what, uh, is what really makes a difference over there. And it's nothing like it was a couple of years ago, uh, ladies and gentlemen. It's a, it's a different place, and it's what these folks are doing here. So can I get, can we get y'all down this way and somehow figure out a, a, something so John can get a picture here? So, so those of you that can still kneel? So so those of you that can still kneel, those of you that can kneel, kneel in the front, take a knee. And we want you, want you on the other side of this.
Thank you for kneeling. Thank you, thank you. I like the young people who can kneel, because I, I kneel on that. I get it back, right? Okay, I can't see you, sir, uh right there. And Mike, right in front of you, I gotta get, I can't see her or him, is it her? I can't see. Okay, there you go. Yeah, but I can see if you do that, I can see you.
You can't see him, he can't see you.
Right. Alright. Alright, Counsel, Austin, keep moving that way just a bit. Yeah, he's tall, so, okay, good. Alright, right here, everybody, because this is gonna be tough one, because I got five hundred people. One, two, three, one, two, three.
Paparazzi's turn. Alright, so let's give them all a big hand. They do a great job. And uh leave it or not, that's it. So we'll let you guys clear out. I'm sure you don't want to be here for all the boring stuff. You betcha. Thanks, Chuck.
Uh Mr. Mayor, if you want to stay down there for a second, we found that we pulled the wrong Poncetlan video out of the vault. And so we'd like to play the current video that uh represents what just recently happened instead of five years ago.
Yeah, I was wondering, some of those people aren't even around anymore.
That is correct.
That's why you had me, threw me for a loop. I said, wait a second, who are those people?
Me too.
But our our sister city folks, I think, already went home. But for the benefit of the public, we'll go ahead and do that. That's Poncetlan Square down there. That's the airport when we all uh got together and they uh reunited at the airport down in Guadalajara. Poncetlan Square, that's my lovely wife. And uh they they've got those big colorful signs in a number of the cities down there now. And uh this was the reception up on uh La Coronia is the name of the uh areas above uh above the lake Chapala. You take a look on a map, you'll find it. That's uh the the former mayor, Mr. Montez. And uh and I was intending to bring the bag of candy out here, so. Uh but they make Montez candies, so if you go to the the stores, you can find that. Um they put on a real nice spread for all of us up there. And uh as a welcoming reception, we do a similar thing here when they show up. And uh the uh there's uh there's Sylvia and Mr. Sylvia. And uh um the view from up there is amazing. This is a huge lake, uh and it helps really uh make the weather quite temperate up there. And uh there's some of the folks that you just saw a few minutes ago. And those two ladies, one's an engineer and the other one's a pharmacist. And like I say, everybody's got a side gig, so they have a little store that sells um uh baby formula and liquor. So I don't know what the connection there is, but that's what they do. Everybody's an entrepreneur down there, and that's the one thing I learned is, everybody's got a side gig. So um but uh they they built this thing up, they, he bought this property when he was fourteen years old. And he's been building it ever since, and he's like fifty something right now. And uh so they do uh uh this is where when people come up, they do quite a quite a bit of uh different receptions and things up in that nature. There's Lisa and and uh some of us that were there. Um the uh uh the mayor ran for governor. He didn't make it, but he's still very involved. This is out of Los Nineteen Hermanos. Uh that is one of their delivery trucks. These guys are doing the whole thing up there. So that was our whole crew uh with with the the folks there um at their uh at their headquarters. And uh uh looking around at at the at the operation and what can we learn? This is that thing I was telling you about. So they bring cattle in over there where it's light up at the top. And the cattle get in it, they hook them up, they go all the way around a circle. And by the time they're done, they're out. And that's a little ankle monitor. I, you see those a lot over at Walmart. And uh so I'm sorry, but uh but that's what connects uh uh to a little computer is they get in there and it uh and they monitor uh tell a lot about the 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 health of the cattle by how much their uh production is there. It's amazingly clean, and all the cattle are under shades up there. So none of them are out, you know, looking for shade or uh out in the sweltering sun. And uh and uh that is the current mayor of the city of Poncetlan. And uh we got to spend a little time over in his office chatting about what we're doing the same, what we're doing different, and what we're doing better. Uh one of the differences is is that um uh they have their their council meetings in a back room like over there, and then you just watch it on TV. I guess it keeps you from getting yelled at, but uh doesn't keep uh doesn't uh doesn't keep the public well informed. This was a lunch we all attended then, uh after one of the tours. Uh there's never a lack of food down there. That's the uh that mayor of Poncetlan is on the left, and a mayor of Okatlan, a neighboring city, uh is on the right there. Uh so just uh having the opportunity now, that uh that that little thing you see there, Sylvia's boyfriend carved that by hand with an X-acto knife and presented that to him as a gift. And uh there's uh there's some of the key city staff, so, and you look like the city clerk and some of the other offices we have here, uh that's their folks there. And uh here, we're out at the Senior Citizens Center. We've gone out there and brought some walkers and things that we didn't have any use for any longer. And we brought them down there and brought brought them in for the uh for the group. Now, here's the deal. I went to the fire station and uh gave the big guy my shirt, and he gave me his shirt. So I wore that shirt when I was working in the yard today. So there it is, Poncetlan Bomberos. So now, these guys, we showed up kind of on the last minute. And uh this is, I mean, this is, this is a relatively poor town. And they broke out their dinner, and we're sitting there, okay, it was elote. Okay, so I gotta say, I did take it. So they had the, it's, it was their corn. They were cooking up some corn for us. And that's uh that was the picture that uh, who was it in our staff that took that picture? Huh? Stella took that picture, had it blown up and put on a canvas and presented it to them. That's another picture uh from up at La Coronia, down at the lake. And uh the view up there is just amazing uh from the top there. Um and uh just one of the small plants, it's about fifteen feet tall there, that thing. Um it's amazing uh um how they look at the environment and they, they made me eat some of those. Okay, so it took me a couple of days to recover from that, so. Eat it, try it, it'll be good, they said. So, yeah, yeah, so. Um but it's just uh it it's just kind of amazing up there when you uh when you look out and uh you don't realize uh uh sometimes what the uh what the beauty is out there. It's a little drizzly out on the other side of the lake, too. And here we are, this is, this is their version of Poncetlan Palmdale Square. And uh and we had stopped there uh on our way over to City Hall. And they have, they have the, you know, the the requisite gazebo in the background there, so. And there it is. So that's the uh that's the sign uh uh commemorating our uh our forty-five years of friendship down there um with the city of Poncetlan. So if you want to get involved, uh again, they have the meetings over here. And it's a really good way to get to learn your uh what's, why your neighbors are doing what they do and what's good and what can we be doing better. So there you go. Thank you.
Public comments on the consent calendar, non-agenda items. If you wish to comment on items listed on the consent calendar, items seventeen point one through seventeen point seventeen, please come forward to the podium, uh state the item number in your comments. It uh doesn't obligate the council to pull it, but it allows you to uh state your case. Uh if it's a non-agenda items, uh you have the opportunity to adjust the council on the subject regarding any item, not on the agenda, but under state law, no action can be taken on uh any items. So uh there's a three-minute time limit on that. So if you want to come forward, hopefully he gave her a a speaker slip so that we can uh contact you on your item later. So if you've got an item on a consent calendar or on the uh any non-agenda item, you can come forward at this time. Anybody?
Hello, everyone. Thanks for the time to come and talk to you.
And your name?
William Elliott. I'm from Leona Valley, a resident in Leona Valley. Um I was here in August um at your town council meeting. Um and I opposed the stop sign at Leona, uh at uh Gody Hill and ELR. Um that was kind of half-cocked. I went off, thought about it, met with your engineers, met with the county engineers, um listened to a couple of meetings we've had at the town council meetings, watched some videos. Um and now I'm even more concerned um that a lot of stuff has been done, a lot of things have been identified. Um but the whole purpose of this is to lower the city's risk. I don't believe you've done that. The reason being is, I wouldn't even have known this if it hadn't come up at the last town council meeting, is that the civil engineer in giving us his speeches and telling us what was good for us and everything at the time basically said, when everybody was raising hell about Seventy-Fifth Street and ELR, he basically said, we can't solve that with the stop sign at Gody Hill. That was our original request for you guys in October of twenty eighteen to come out there and help us with, since you own that property. Um he also indicated that the stop sign at Gody Hill and ELR will increase the number of accidents. Not decrease them, increase them. As you know, this survey that Ruben and his guys did did not indicate enough accidents there to do anything. So um I think the lawyer here said it best at the August meeting when he, when they asked about the delay at this old. But when he asked for, I think it was, he was asked how, what was the liability if we extended this ninety days or thirty days? He came back, no more than we already have. You guys have owned that corner for twenty-five years, okay? Twenty-five years. How many accidents have you had? How many lawsuits have you had associated with that? You guys thought you were thrown under the bus by the county? I agree that. We still have no idea why the county got involved this. If they hadn't opened their mouth, supplied that that paperwork to you, we wouldn't be here.
But here we are.
So anyways, um is it up, three minutes up?
Yes, sir.
Oh, unfortunately.
I know. Seems like it flies when you're up there.
Anyways, you guys have not solved the liability issue, and you're gonna have more. You really need to do a risk assessment.
Thank you. You have any other speakers? If you if you have an item number, if you could state it just so we can kind of follow it on our agendas at the same time, sir.
Thank you. My name is Mike Publicher. I'm the president of Leona Valley Town Council. Uh the final reports were provided by both Ruben and Mr. Heffernan. And we've reviewed the reports. We believe they're flawed. Uh they include information from the LA County Draft Report dated June sixth, uh where they talks about the criteria for through a stop sign. In that uh report, it specifically states that the criteria was not satisfied. Neither the city of Palmdale Speed Study nor Traffic Study justified the installation of the three-way stop sign at ELR and Gody intersection. At the October fourteenth Leona Valley Town Council meeting, Mr. Heffernan admitted that the installation of three-way stop sign will most likely increase the amount of traffic collisions at the intersection. With this knowledge, we we also believe that this increases the city's exposure and liability. The city used a third party for evaluating the intersection videos as part of the Engineering and Traffic Study. They indicated the minimum traffic count was not reached, and there were no accidents at Gody and ELR that could be justified with a multi-way stop sign. The city's fallback position to justify the stop sign now is a visibility issue. Of the three accidents recorded at the intersection over the past five years, visibility was not listed as a primary collision factor for any of these incidents. Per city study, potential visibility issue only applies to the southbound Gody to eastbound ELR left turn traffic, which represents a de minimis value within the study. The potential visibility issue that is not being considered is the eastbound Elizabeth Lake Road traffic traveling at fifty-five miles an hour around limited visibility turns coming up on now stopped traffic at the new stop sign at Gody. Again, substantial exposure and liability for the city of Palmdale, not considered and not even mentioned in the study. There have been numerous documents requested for the intersection of ELR and Seventy-Fifth Streets to be examined due to the high number of serious accidents and only a single request for ELR and Gody. Why is the stop sign issue being fast-tracked? Well, the more serious issue of ELR and Seventy-Fifth being ignored. I would like to think that the city's risk manager was made aware of this. Uh our town council wants what is best and in the best interest for the safe and the safety of our community. We want the data to be accurate and the process scientific. When this is the case, we, the Leona Valley Town Council, will back the recommendations made. But the data is not accurate. It is flawed. The subjective review was not scientific and in fact goes against your third party's observations. Considerations were not evaluated regarding the installation of the stop sign and the increased risk of traffic accidents as a result of these actions. The city has exposure and faced litigation in the past regarding this intersection. However, it has been minimal. Compare that to the increase in accidents due to the new stop sign and reevaluate your new exposure and liability. Has this been considered? It is the opinion of the town council that these matters. I'm sorry. In conclusion, it's uh the opinion of the town council that these matters needs to be further reviewed and considered. We are asking for a thirty-day extension so that data you provided can be further evaluated by our traffic experts. We have received support from both Supervisor Barker's office, along with Senator Wilk's office, in providing subject matter experts to assist us with our review.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Smina Lisa. I came here this evening to talk about the senior citizens. Um I was under the impression that uh as of November, that the senior citizens and others would, that they were having a subsidy for uh the rent control, uh that the city was being funded and that we could apply for rent control. They were given the money as of November first. When I called to ask about them subsidizing the rent, they uh said that the money would not be released till sometime in twenty twenty. I personally live at a senior complex up Palo Verde Terrace. I moved in there the first of May. My rent was seven sixty-six. I was supposed to make double that on the income. My income is twelve seventy-two. My rent has been made, raised sixty dollars in the six months that I have been there. In less than six months, it was raised sixty dollars. Not only am I, that leased me three hundred and ten dollars a month, which now they take out of my social security Part B, is I no longer get the extra help if I'm moving from Nevada. It takes seven months here for the state of California to have, give you the extra help with Part B, which should be a simple thirty-day.
What you would think.
Thing. It takes the county thirty days and six months for the state to kick in. They say, well, you should get that money back. In the meantime, me and my neighbors, who are very worried about, I am gonna be among the homes in a very short time. That three hundred dollars that's left over is for food, gas, electric. We, I have neighbors who are extremely upset. We worked our lives and we did pay into taxes and that. And we are good people, and I just think that we have been kind of pushed aside and, you know, left alone. I have tried to do other things, you know, to try to raise money and stuff, you know? I don't have any family to help me. And I just don't understand why the money isn't being released to help us in certain, you know, as far as the housing.
So I I don't have the answer to that for you right now, but you got a guy in the back of the room that's gonna stand up, okay? I want you to go talk to him. He's also gonna provide you with some other additional resources that you can think about abailing yourself of that can help you. I understand exactly where you're at. My mom's in the senior building, and the same thing happened to her. And she went up to eight fifty a month, and she gets like nine twenty-eight from social security. So I get it, okay? So that's uh Mr. Murphy back there. And he will uh uh he will connect you up with some of our other resources. And we'll find out why, you know, what's the problem here with getting this money uh cut loose, okay?
Thank you very much for your helping your time.
Thank you.
Uh Jason, uh yeah, it's just, their their money's there. You guys have been collecting Measure HH funds for three years. The city of Palmdale contributes five million dollars to HH, the homeless fund. That's fifteen million dollars. Where's all the money? It's all in LA. Why don't we get this money? It doesn't make any sense to me. Why are these senior citizens hurting? They're crying because they're gonna be homeless. They have no family, no nothing. This is all they have. The senior center's always closed. There's no cable, there's no internet. Did the city attorney ever write a letter to the Spectrum to find out about uh low-income internet? No, I guarantee you, I'll pay a hundred dollars to his dollar, he didn't do it. Why are you guys not fighting? If you can't fight for senior citizens, then I don't even know what you're doing on the city council. Those are voters. The election's coming up in twenty twenty, and I'm gonna make this a big issue. You either fight for that money from the county or don't even run. And think about, because I, this really ticks me off, because every decade goes by. And think about, cause I, this really ticks me off, cause every decade goes by, and we allow L A to treat us like stepchildren and take all our money. We got a thirty-three percent return on, on park bond money. We got, uh, on the, there's just so many. Why are you guys not fighting and raising hell, you know, with Barker and the county?
You missed some of those meetings. We are, and, but it's a, it's, it's a process. It's not easy.
But Lancaster got six hundred thousand. Where's your six hundred thousand?
Well, we've got some stuff-
And that's six hundred thousand. Lancaster pays in five million two. So what is all the money? Come on, you guys. If we can't solve this one issue to help our senior citizens with rent and get them low-income internet and cable, then I don't know what purpose of this whole thing. Uh, now, I wanna talk about, there's so much to talk about.
Yeah, you got a minute and nine.
I know. The mural over at the firehouse. It's probably the best mural that represents Antle Valley I've ever saw. So if you, the people at home, if you haven't seen it at the firehouse, the new subway shop, you should go see it, cause it's awesome. It's beautiful. But the other thing is, we have to address assaults. Zanata was here, right? Let's talk about z- you guys not addressing assaults in this, this valley. Lancaster, assault, 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 assault.
Can't deal with Lancaster.
Palmdale, assault, 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 assault. This is in the crime block every day. Why don't we have a billboard campaign saying, "Hey, we will not tolerate this. Hitting another human being is off limits." We need to do some, a lot more action. I'm, let's go, next thing. Why aren't we attending the California State Economic Summit in Fresno? We're one of the only areas in the whole state that's not attending a state economic conference.
I responded to that, sir.
And it, wh- why can't you send somebody from the city?
It's closed. It's full. It filled up overnight.
Okay, so I would, I would tell you what. If I was, if I was the mayor, I would jump the fence to get into that conference. That's the difference between me. I'm a fighter. I'm not gonna tolerate this.
Did you get the link I sent you? We're gonna watch it online.
Yeah, but that, that's not, you gotta be there with movers and shakers and talk to them and be there present. You have to be face-to-face with people. This, watching online and everything, you gotta handshake.
So, so the other, the important topic on that is, is next month, we have the Southern California version of that, and we already-
It's not the same. The governor's not gonna be there. Uh, uh, all the head people of the state are not gonna be there. So you see what I'm saying? We're being left out of the loop. We have a hundred thousand people that commute, that suffer every day-
You have to wrap it up.
For four hours. Two hours there and two hours back, and we're not gonna go to the econo- state economic conference? I've been telling you about this economic conference for three years, so don't tell me this.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Got it. Thanks.
Fight.
Anybody else? Hi, what's your name?
Hi, Mayor. I'm Breon, and I'm back. Hi, council members. How are you? So, um, last month, I waited patiently for a response, a phone call perhaps. I never received it. Um, so I'll refresh your memory. I came to the same podium last month, and I had asked you about the Boys and Girls Club in Palmdale. Do you recall? Yeah, and I didn't-
We're actively working on that.
Any phone call about it. So what I did, because I'm on the L cap committee over at Palmdale School District, so what I did is, I had asked them, I said, "Hey, do you guys know anything about the Boys and Girls Club for Palmdale? And what are we doing about it?" And it was almost like we were playing tennis, right? Because Palmdale School District was like, "Oh, go talk to the city." And then you guys said, "Oh, well, we're working on it with the Palmdale School District," and they were like, "What?" So what I'm asking now is for like an ETA kind of, like, can we get an idea as parents, um, as to when we're looking at potentially opening up a park, maybe a building? Um, hell, I can give you my backyard, but I'm wondering, what are we gonna do about these students whose parents, cause this is a commuter town, whose parents are out in L A trying to make their way back out here? We just had the flyers, right? So I'm trying to figure out, what is it that we're doing to have a secure, safe place in after-school for kids to come and to fellowship together and to be creative without going into their parents' house with a key, especially middle school students. High school students, ah, they might be okay to do that, but middle school students, they're going into their parents' house from the hours of three to seven. God knows what they're doing inside these houses, right? And we know that this is like the opiate capital, right? So it's like, let's do something to make sure that these kids are safe, because if not, we're about to have a crisis, and it's gonna start with our kids. And we know what Frederick Douglass says, right? He says that it's easier to build a healthy child than to repair a broken adult. So if we can start now, that'd be perfect, I think. But if we're not giving them any creative outlets after school, we're letting them run the streets to do god knows what, right? So, um, I only got twenty-eight seconds left, but I just wanted you to know.
Take it all.
I'll be, I'll be right back here every single month organizing parents, bugging you until we figure out what is it that we're doing.
I would also suggest, uh, are you on, are you on a board with the Boys and Girls Club?
Um, actually, I spoke to Stacy, and I'm working on that as well.
So you need to spend some little more time with them, because we've given them some items to follow up on, and I'm not sure what they're doing. And I personally met with a number of the school board, uh, executives and members, uh, and I mean, they're, they're, they're ready to go. They need, they need some action on that side, so, uh, there, there's, and we also have some things in the works here, but it's a process of, we've got people in these facilities already. We can't kick them out because they had a problem over at the other building. So we're not gonna kick somebody out. We're gonna have to, we're gonna migrate programs around. So, uh, and we're also working with the county supervisor's office to try to get some buildings released, but it's on L A World Airport's property, and we're having a problem because they don't wanna give the property up, so.
Okay, well, you give me a call if I can support in any way. Like I said, my backyard is open.
I, again, I would, I would, I would speak with the, the Boys and Girls Club, ask them what their follow-up has been to some of these suggestions we put out there. And also, uh, Mr. Miller and Mr. Murphy are also actively engaged with those, uh, groups as well, and they may be able to give you more of a timely update, um, something within the last week and a half, okay?
See you next month.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Oh, okay.
My name's Louis, and, um-
Which item is this?
Uh, this is gonna be-
General, general comment?
Yeah, no, it's on agenda.
Okay.
Um, I, I've been trying to, uh, go ahead and get a business license with the City of Palmdale now. Um, I've been denied because I've been applying for, uh, C B D. And, um, I, I understand, of course, the, 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 what, what is the word I'm looking for? The stipulation with, um, cannabis and marijuana? Um, but I did wanna differentiate the difference between C B D and T H C. Um, I, I, I do just wanna let you know that, um, I'm pretty sure you guys do understand. But, um, C B D is completely, um, completely different from T H C. I understand it makes up forty percent of the cannabis, um, genetic makeup, but, um, C B D is, is non-psychoaptic. It, it's non-psycho-tropic. Um, you, you guys do state it in your guys' marijuana chapter in five point, uh, zero- sorry, uh, five point zero five, uh, point zero one zero. Um, you guys do clearly state that it's completely different from, um, T H C and, uh, normal marijuana cannabis. Um, in September two thousand and eighteen, the F D A did, uh, administrator, they did deschedule it from a class, um, one to class, uh, five for, uh, specific reasons, of course. Um, there's, uh, there's, there's, uh, C B D drugs that they declassified and descheduled. But, um, sorry about that. Give me one second. Uh, I, I did just wanna, um, remind you guys that, of course, uh, any Schedule V drug is, um, more medically accepted. It, it doesn't really have that really high, uh, potential for abuse and stuff like that. Um, I did just wanna let you guys know that, uh, as of fourteen, as of two thousand and fourteen as well, it's, it's also, uh, you know, hemp has been, uh, reenacted, uh, for the hemp bill for, for farmers, so that, you know, we're able to grow it. Um, not a problem. Uh, my, my only tired thing is that, why is it that there's so many other places in Palmdale that are allowed to sell it? Um, you know, like other businesses and, um, just have it as a product.
Can you please give your, uh, le- leave your name and number? Uh, with, uh, who, who's, who's gonna take the name and number for me here? Somebody put your hand up. See the guy back there that's not putting his hand up? Mr., there you go. All right, give it to Mr. Behan. He'll get it to me. We'll set up a meeting. I, I gotta get some background. I can't address it right here, okay? So we'll find out what's going on. Let's see if we can, we can figure out what the story is here, okay?
Of course.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, so, um, I just flipped my page and I lost my spot. Okay, so, um, our item now is the consent calendar. Okay, yes, number sixteen.
I'll move that.
Okay, I have a motion? A second? To waive full reading resolutions and ordinances? Uh, voice vote on that, okay? City clerk? Okay. All right. This is the waiver of full reading, full reading of resolutions. This is the wrong, this is the wrong item. Okay, I'm, no, I'm sorry. We're on, we're number sixteen. Go do a voice vote on that, and we'll let you, let the machine catch up, okay? So I have a motion, a second, all in favor of, uh, waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances? Say aye, aye? Name of the order. Okay, so on the consent calendar, uh, anybody wanna pull anything off the consent calendar?
Yeah, I think we should pull seventeen point fifteen.
Okay. Seventeen fifteen, anything else? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Motion to approve the consent calendar except for seventeen fifteen. Okay, seventeen fifteen. Um, can we have, uh, who's gonna give a report on this? Mr. Pedia? Somebody, come on down.
This is Mayor, a member of the city council. I'm Bill Pedia. I'm the city engineer. I have the duties of conducting traffic studies when the residents have different requests for the installation of stop signs or traffic signals. In this case, uh, in July first of twenty nineteen, we received an email from L A County Department of Public Works requesting the installation of three-way stop controls at the intersection of Elizabeth Lake Road and Gode Hill. They submitted a traffic study, uh, attached to that email, uh, and later on, they call it a draft study. We looked at it, and, uh, we moved fast, and we went to the August sixth, uh, council meeting for the approval of three-way stop controls. L A County, uh, they have their own engineers, and we follow, uh, we agree with some of the standards that they follow. So that's why I came to the city council. The Leona Valley Town Council was present in that meeting, and they told us that we're not aware of what's, what's going on. And basically, our Director of Public Works basically accepted that we thought, the city thought that the county was talking to the Leona Valley Town Council in the process that they were doing, so it didn't happen. So we met with, uh, Leona Valley Town Council a couple of times, and we decided to do our own, uh, traffic study. We conducted our own traffic study, and the conclusion, I'm not going details, of, uh, the main issue right there, the biggest issue is the visibility of the intersection. And for that reason, uh, in engineering judgment, we recommended the installation of the three-way stop controls. Has historical information, in the year two thousand and three, L A County, the board supervisors approved the installation of three-way stop controls at the same location, but the stop signs were never installed. I don't know the reason why it happened, but the board supervisor has already approved the three-way stop controls. So, because I don't have the factual information, I don't wanna do a hearsay, but that's, uh, previous information. So basically, the county has done two studies, recommending the three-way stop. We did one study, and that's why we recommended the installation of three-way stop controls. And one of the biggest issues is visibility.
Can we, can we also address, um, there, in addition to simply putting up a couple of poles or signs on it? I understand there was some additional, additional other work, uh, that the, uh, Public Works Department was contemplating at that, in that vicinity to help improve sightlines and that, the negative, um, you come around a curve, it's not properly, uh, uh, slanted, and you actually-
Yeah, there's a different project at the intersection of Seventh Fifth West and Elizabeth Lake Road. There's a different, uh, challenge there that we have. There's some issue with the visibility there as well, and we received a couple of accidents. So the City of Palmdale has, uh, done a design. We just, we must finish, getting pretty close to finish the design for fixing, uh, that, uh, challenge that we have of visibility at the intersection of Seventh Fifth West and Elizabeth Lake Road. So it's like a separate, uh, project, even though there's a proximity, probably about twelve hundred feet apart or fifteen hundred feet apart. So we working on that. For this, uh, proposal of installing the three-way stop controls at Elizabeth Lake Road and Gode Hill Road, one of the things that we, I'm recommending as well is the installation of flashing beacon at this location. It's a rural area. It's very open, and the stop signs, you know, even though we put advanced stop signs, uh, one of the things that we wanna do is to put a flashing beacon as well.
So that, that will help address the issue that gentleman said about not, not knowing that that stop sign's up ahead there?
Yeah, that will help. We will have advanced signs, pretty much, uh, warning about the stop sign. That's the typical application of advanced signs. And then in addition to that, the flashing beacon will be way up, about seventeen to twenty feet in the air to help visualize, you know, with the, and especially in the night. It'll be pretty helpful as well in the, in, in the day. We did the same thing at the intersections Avenue and the Sixty Street, Sixtieth West, and it worked pretty well.
What's the history with, uh, accidents at this location?
The history in our study, the accident rate is low, and, uh, from twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen, there were two accident. From seventeen to eighteen was zero, and the last year was one accident. So the accident, uh, record is, is low at this location.
Were any of them fatal?
No.
Okay, so it's been relatively low. There hasn't been a lot of issues-
Correct.
Per se at this, the way it's been.
That's correct.
Okay.
My concern is that, and the reason I asked to have this polled, uh, is that there are a number of, uh, issues that are raised by the, uh, Leona Valley Town Council in their letters and reports, and, um, I, I think our report was rather scant in, uh, addressing. In fact, I don't think the written report from this, from staff addresses any of these issues, really. And, um, I understand that you've provided us with some insight, but I'd like to see some specific responses um, to the issues that Leona Valley Town Council's raising here. Um, and, um, on that basis, I would move to continue this item.
What's the, uh, what's, what, what are the issues? Maybe you can address them.
Well, I mean, there's just a lot of issues here that I think that, that I'd like to see, rather than having a off-the-cuff kind of response, and I know that I've known you for years, Bill, and I'm not, uh, questioning your, your abilities and your professionalism, but I think they raise issues in this letter, and in the other, uh, correspondence that ought to be addressed in reports to either, uh, put them at rest or provide solutions to, to those.
I'd have to agree with you, Richard. I think we're getting two different stories here, and, and this is a, is a public safety issue. And, and with knowing that there hasn't been a lot of accidents in the past, I, I do think we need to take a closer look at this, cause I have read over a lot of the stuff that the Leona Valley Town Council has, has brought to our attention, and I think it needs a closer look. So I'll second that motion.
About their three traffic studies? There's been three different traffic studies?
What I'm talking about is addressing, I know that there's been traffic studies, but Leona Valley raises certain specific issues, and I think they ought to be addressed in writing so that we can consider them.
You responded to Leona Valley Town Council on their issues here?
Well, basically, this, we have a couple of people very involved, uh, giving credit. They put a lot of effort. Um, basically, fighting the installation of three-way stop control, challenging every single thing from the traffic count, from the speed studies, everything. So what will happen, you know, we can respond to a lot of, a lot of those things, you know, but at the end, the, uh, the professional judgment from, uh, from us will be, I've, I don't guess for us, because it's our intersection, is to install the three-way stops. So we can go and respond- So we can go and respond to every single thing, but remember, they, this is not a vote of, uh, as the citizens or, or political decision. It's factual information that we have in the field and if the council wants to go into every single detail that they are asking, we're willing to do so, but you know.
We start at the, uh, point where it seems like this is a solution in search of a problem. If we've only had a couple of accidents over a period of time, none of them have been serious accidents, none of them have been fatal accidents. And I think that there ought to be consideration given to our neighbors. And, uh, part of that consideration is to respond to some of the points that were raised. And I would appreciate it if we could do that.
You're, you're the city council, so we.
The decision on placing a stop sign is for safety reasons. And I'm sure that there are traffic counts that have been taken into account in making the, the warrant to place the stop signs. It is a safety issue, it's a safety mechanism. Just because there's been no accidents, it doesn't mean that we should just leave it alone. It's a safety mechanism.
Uh, you know, I was gonna say, I mean, we have to rely on the, our own engineers, but here we're relying on our own engineers and two stu- traffic studies by the county, okay? I think if you go through any of these, been through enough of them at trial, they find problems with every traffic study. So if we say this, and, you know, we never say an intersection is perfectly safe, but there's more than just traffic counts or speed or studies and all of that that goes into this. There's something like twenty-five or thirty different things that can warrant, you know, they add them up and they come up with, I don't remember what it is, five out of, you know, all these possible warrants. So it may not be, if you pick it out all of these possibilities, you can say, well, there's not enough traffic or there, well, there's not, the speed isn't bad enough. The whole idea behind this is to prevent accidents and if you wait for one where somebody gets killed in the face of three studies that say one's necessary and it's, ends up a broadside accident, that's a problem, that, that's a problem for the city, that's a problem for us. I'm not saying, you know, that's gonna happen in the next thirty days, but it's really a matter of, I mean, maybe Bill can talk you a little bit more about the warrants and that, but I know these things get horribly involved and it's very, very difficult to make one that's perfect, that, that will satisfy every concern, especially if you don't wanna see the traffic signal, which is the definite impression that I get. I mean, maybe they didn't want one there, maybe they wanted one at Seventy-Fifth, but the problem is, is now this has kinda turned into a thing where they're gonna find every fly speck it, if you will, and, and come through with these problems. You know, like I said, I'm not saying an accident's gonna happen there, but we had testimony from our own council that there were problems with that intersection. So that gives me pause, I mean, I've been through that intersection hundreds of times. You know, and I, the only time I've ever had a problem was making a left, coming off of Gody Hill Road. Um, and because people do, maybe it's a speed problem. You know, maybe, maybe the, the speed has to be looked at, I don't know if it was, but, you know, it's, people get going, they're not.
Every time we look at a speed though, every time we do a speed study, the speed goes up.
I, yeah, that's true.
Cause it's gotta be set at the eighty-fifth percentile.
Right, but I was gonna say that, you know, I go out there all the time and if you're doing fifty-five, you got people on your rear end and they're trying to, you know, that's not just that intersection, I'm talking about the whole length of it, but, you know.
The thing that, the thing that worries me at this point is we've got, we, we just got done with this huge lawsuit uh, off of Bull's Ranch Road and Sawgrass when we didn't have any testimony and we didn't have any additional traffic reports since that intersection was created twenty-five years ago.
Right.
Uh, and we spent god knows how much money, uh, defending lawsuits on, uh, because of, uh, questions about visibility and a curve and all those other types of issues when there wasn't any question in anybody's mind, of course, except our plaintiff attorney, you know?
Right.
And now we've got two county studies and a city study and, uh, some personal observations, anecdotal, okay, but, uh, I've, I've been in those depositions. Uh, I, I, I think that the problem we run into is like we had over on, um, by Mazari where we kept going back and forth about whether or not to put a stop sign in there, then a kid gets killed, okay? No kid had been killed up to that point, now a kid gets killed and, you know, how, how many zillion dollars is that? And that's not the point, it's the, was the impact on the family, you know, because that, because of that kid out there. Uh, and, and, uh, every other resident sits there and accepts that, that response, you know, that, uh, that responsibility then, financially.
There are times when, I mean, council particularly gets put in this position of damned if you do, damned if you don't. Pardon, you know, my language, but that's the position you're in. You're gonna get hurt either way, but I can guarantee you, if the traffic study is perfect, plaintiff's attorneys are gonna find problems with it. Something, some, you know, that's what, that's their job, I mean, that's their experts' jobs. We have to defend something that may have been done in your, like the case you're referring to, twenty years ago. You know, when the subdivision was put in. And, you know, there's, things change after that.
Well, the other thing that concerns me is, is that all this time, everybody thought this was the county's problem. And all of a sudden we go out there and we survey it and found out, guess what? The county's given us a couple of, uh, reports, it's your problem, now it's our, it's the city's problem now.
Right.
And they already said it's an issue. So that's what concerns me, I mean, I, I would like to see some kind of response, you know, to some of these issues that are on here, I don't think that relieves the, the, um, underlying uh, question of whether or not we need to, uh, uh, address that signal out there. I think there's two separate issues, there's, you know, uh, some ongoing dialogue that might need to occur here, but I still think that my responsibility at the, at the end of the day is to the hundred and sixty thousand residents of the city and, and the, uh, and to the families of the people that gotta drive by there.
Both of whom live in the Leon Valley.
So.
So, I mean, that, that community's asking for that, the representatives from that community are asking for it.
I am still looking for the letter where they're assuming liability and that doesn't happen. And that can't happen. So, I mean, I, I mean, if that could happen, that'd be great. We'd say, fine, no problem, they, they gotta take it for the next thirty days to the December meeting and the monkey's off of our back.
I think we've already invested so much of time staff in this, uh, project. Not only staff time this time, but also the county. So I believe there was a motion, maybe Mr. Loa, was there a second?
Some motion?
Yes, Mr. Bishop seconded it.
I'd like to introduce a substitute motion to approve the item as recommended by staff.
Okay, a substitute motion, do I have a second on that? To, to approve the staff recommendation?
Why don't you just vote on my motion, turn it down if you want to do that?
Because you made a substitute motion and, so you gotta take the substitute motion.
They'd act on the substitute motion first.
Okay, so, but did you second that one?
Yes, I'm the second to substitute motion.
Okay, alright, okay, so the order of business is that you have to take the substitute motion and then if the substitute motion fails, then you take the original motion then, so. Okay. That, well, that's, that's the originally, you don't have that on there? Do you have the original motion up there?
I have to, cause it's already in motion.
Okay, so the record should reflect that, that we're voting on the substitute motion uh, to approve the staff recommendation, not what's on the screen?
Right.
Okay. Okay, that motion passes three-two then. Alright, I'd like to ask the staff to, to, and they, Mr. uh, Mr. Loa did bring up a valid point here about addressing this. I don't think it overrode the state, the concerns that the city attorney and, um, traffic engineer brought up. But I think I'd like to, and you guys need to get back together, we need to improve this communication, folks.
And, and I do understand that the community's concerned, it's like when they put in red light cameras in a city, everybody all of a sudden slams on their brakes and they get those, those rear ends because people are trying to stop. And I think that some of the fear that some of the residents have is that people are not gonna be expecting that stop sign to be there, so whatever we, we do, we, we need to make sure that people know that it's, that they're coming up on it. And the speeds are way too fast on that road, we, we've gotta find some way to mitigate those speeds too.
And one of the things that they do, they do, they put a, a change of traffic pattern or something like that to warn.
Gus or, or Bill, you wanna address what, what will occur out there, cause you're starting to get some questions here?
I mean, granted, you're the experts and we're not, but I, I, I do know that I've had some calls from citizens and their complaint.
I, I tried to find a way around this, but I just, you know.
You were saying?
That the complaints have been that the reason it's gonna create more accidents is because people will be stopping, people will be coming up behind them and will run into them because they're not expecting to stop. So what will we do to prevent that, so we can put the minds at ease?
At the beginning, because it's a new, uh, pattern of traffic, we had to put away in advance signs, we put flags, you know, for warning of the stop sign. That's one of the things that we, we will do. In addition to that, will be, like I mentioned before, we're gonna put a flashing beacon. Uh, some people put a stop sign with a little LED lights.
Will that be a permanent flashing beacon?
Yeah, it'd be, yeah, like the one in, in the Sixtieth and Avenue N.
Okay.
Bill, in there permanent stop sign ahead signs?
Yeah, we will have a sign, we have, we have, we have three-way stop signs, just like any normal three-way stops. In addition to that, we'll have advanced signs, and, and in the first couple weeks for the installation, we'll have the flags announcing the change in the pattern. In addition to that, we'll have the flashing beacon.
And, and you gotta have the, uh, stop, stop ahead, I've seen those before too.
And that will be permanent, correct?
That will be permanent, yes.
So both the flashing light and the stop sign ahead, both be permanent?
Oh, yes, we have to have.
From all directions?
Yes.
Okay.
All directions.
Mister Pedia, now that this has been approved, what's the timeline for getting this installed?
We buy in equipment, I think within a month, we'll be able to, less than a month. I've already been working with my traffic signal staff, so we have the equipment, so we have to go and drill. The stop sign, I can start it next week, I mean, right away. But I'm, because I have, uh, the concern, I'm, I wanna put a flashing beacon at the same time. So within the two weeks, uh, if everything works well, I don't think more than three weeks.
What's our liability exposure for that lapse of time, Mr. Ditzey?
Well, there's always exposure, even after the signs are in, there's exposure, but it, it helps that we've gone ahead, followed our own rec, our own engineers' recommendations and installed it. And then, you know, in any case, is what I, the point I was trying to make before is, you're gonna defend that analysis. And it, it might be five years from now, it could be twenty years, it could be never, but in any lawsuit filed, you end up having to defend that. And so, you know, we've had the instance where we delayed putting in signs or we delayed an action, you know, or we were in the process of getting money to do something. And, um, uh, you know, in a lot of cases, it's a relatively insignificant amount of money compared to the damage that can happen to somebody. So, you know, if you say, well, we were trying to get money for the four-way stops or we were trying to get, um, you know, if you're doing a study, that helps because that shows you're aware of the problem, but that also hurts you in court, cause you're aware of the problem, you know? And you didn't move quickly enough because now you have somebody's been killed or somebody's been injured. But I think it helps that we're in the process and the window's closing up.
But my goal is to do it as fast as I can, if I can do it in one week, we'll do it in one week.
With all due speed, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, so my moves is along to eighteen, public hearing. This is a TEPRA hearing pursuant to Internal Revenue Code, do so, somebody wanna read this? I'll need to read this. Okay.
Good afternoon, council, good evening, council.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes, sir. My name is Carleton Holmes, I'm the finance manager for the city of Palmdale. And I'd like to read into the record the resolution for a coun, oh, city council resolution twenty nineteen eighty-eight. It's a resolution of the city council of the city of Palmdale approving the issuance by the cal, by the California Public Finance Authority of multifamily housing revenue bonds in aggregate principal amount not to exceed thirty million dollars for the purpose of financing or refinancing the acquisition and construction of Mason's Palmdale Apartments and certain other matters relating thereto. Uh, we ask that the council hold a public hearing, a TEPRA hearing to pursuant to Internal Revenue Code, section one forty-seven F, to re, to receive testimony on the issuance of revenue bonds by California Public Finance Authority and on the nature and location of the eight, one hundred and eighteen unit multifamily rental housing project located at Sixty-Fifth Street, East and East Avenue S. And adopt resolution twenty nineteen zero eighty-eight approving a plan of finance for the issuance of California Public Finance Authority revenue bonds for Revol, for Revelo Holding Incorporated project in aggregate, aggregate amount not to exceed thirty million dollars for the purpose of financing the acquisition and construction of a hundred and eighteen unit multifamily rental housing project and certain other matters relating thereto. Uh, and that's what we're asking.
What's the fiscal impact for our city?
Fiscal impact? Uh, we have someone here who can discuss that for us, Richard.
So the, um, my understanding on these TEPRA hearings and, uh, maybe the, uh, city staff or the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, the, we, anytime a, a project is, is looking for, uh, CPFA financing, um, it's the, whatever jurisdiction that's in, has to have the hearing about whether or not, uh, the, um, the project qualifies for that funding. But it doesn't have to necessarily be, um, project drawings, uh, this still has to go through the standard city, uh, uh, what do you call it, uh, the, the planning commission? And, and all that other process, this is, this is a, a financing mechanism and an obligation that each community gets.
Because, because we're gonna open it to a public hearing, I just want the public to be aware that the city of Palmdale is not paying for this.
Yeah, no, we're not, this is not a bond issue, the city's doing.
Oh, that was.
Yeah.
This is not something the city's paying for, so I just wanna be very clear. But I wanted to make sure that I, I understood it right, that's why I asked what the pack was.
Financial obligations, uh, because the, uh, project is held in our jurisdiction, then we're required to be the ones who actually hold a par, public hearing, and that's why we're here tonight asking.
So it's like when, uh, TPAA, uh, was going for their financing bonds, uh, the city was obligated to have the, the hearing here. So, city isn't issuing the bonds, there's no bond liability for the city?
None whatsoever.
And we're not discussing any project specifics here, we're discussing the financing?
No, it's just, just the financing.
Right, just the financing, okay.
Is the applicant here or the developer? Is the applicant person?
Uh, the developer.
No.
Developer, Reveller? Mister, uh.
And we will admit.
I have a question that, uh, well, it could be very simple, I understand we're here to, uh, address the, uh, public hearing. Uh, you understand that there's been a pre-application submitted on this project? Can you give us an introduction of what the project entails?
Yes, uh, uh, Mayor, Honorable Counsel, Phil Rand with Revola Holdings and the principal. Uh, we have, um, a hundred and eighteen units, it is a multifamily project. They will be in fact consistent with the current zoning there, which is single-family homes. They're all single-story detached, single-family homes, but they will be, uh, structured as a multifamily project, which will be owned and, uh, maintained by us.
If it's single family, how can it be multifamily?
There, there will be single family, but there'll be rental single family.
Rental units, single-family units?
Yes.
For rent?
Yes.
So these are, uh, you're anticipating smaller lots and things of that nature?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so it's actually gonna be broken down into separate lots, you're gonna?
No, the, the lots are consistent.
It's gonna be one single property with?
Yes, yes, there'll be, there'll be a house on the front and then there'll be an accessory dwelling unit in the rear, um, on each lot.
But the, the hearing isn't really to discuss the project, it's really here just to the finance. Just to make sure we're on track.
Is there gonna be an affordability component to this project or is it too early to talk about that?
There is an affordability, uh, component, yes.
Yeah, so that's the qualifying factor for these particular bonds?
That's what I thought.
Okay, alright, so let's go ahead and open a public hearing, so does anybody else in the public that wanted to, uh, um, ask any particular questions on this matter? Please state your name.
Uh, Jason Zink. I'm sorry for getting upset, but I do get upset when it comes to our seniors and I don't think you guys are doing enough to.
Okay, on this project, please.
Yeah, I know, but you guys need to do a lot more. Okay. Uh, and I do think that that stop sign will cause more accidents, by the way, if you don't have LED stop sign.
On this project, please.
On this project here, uh, I just think that there's, there needs to be a. On this project here, uh, I just think that there's, there needs to be a system in place. Where people come with projects, and the City Council and the Planning Commission can kinda give them a a heads up. Or or heads down, you know? Uh, this is uh, you know, higher, that's areas there is zoned for R seven thousand. It's not zoned for multifamily. You know, this is a good company, they're, that's good, they're a good company. I looked them up and and seen their projects, but do we really want high-density? Uh, units away, way out there, out there on seventieth street and Avenue S? I mean, I've always, you know, being on the GPAC, General Plan Committee and stuff like that, I mean, it's kinda Planning one oh one. You put high-density behind commercial, and the further out you go, the bigger the lots. So why would we allow this financing and stuff like this, and then go to them and say, well, you know what, this doesn't go with our general plan? And the Planning Commission and City Council won't approve it. It's like, we're kinda spinning our wheels. Why spin his wheels, and why spin our staff's wheels? Let's like, be upfront with them. Do you guys think this is a good place for this project? I mean, we don't even know the details on the project. So, are we wasting his, I mean, can he use that financing to say, build it another place in Palmdale? Let's say, hey, this isn't gonna be the place for this.
I think that's up to him and the property he owns.
Right, but the thing is, you see what I'm saying? We're kinda wasting time. I mean, let's give them heads up, give them heads down. Uh, on not just this project, but many projects, and many CUPs. There should be a way, where we're not wasting peoples and staff's time.
Development Advisory Board, sir.
Huh?
That's what the DAB is for.
Okay, but the thing is, I mean, I don't even know why this was even allowed. I I would, I would've turned it down right away. If I was on a planning commission or a city council, you know? Cause why would you, why would you, I just, it just seems like a wasted time. Would you, are you guys gonna be happy with this? You don't even know what the project looks like. So he could come here, get that financing from the state, and then come to you guys and and the residents and and the planning commission votes him down.
I think this could be hard pressed, because it's an affordability project, so I think that's another consideration you have to give.
Okay, so the people have to walk a mile and a half to a shopping center that live in a multifamily unit. I don't, it just doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, thanks. Anybody else?
Good evening, council members. Good evening, Mayor. Suzanne Reyna here. Um, I actually like this. Everybody puts the east side down constantly. There's a lot of nice things on the east side S. And where this is gonna be is not that far from wonderful shopping areas, wonderful stores, um. Single family. I'd like to know what type of other structures they're gonna build around this for those families? Are they going to help incorporate with parks? Uh, what about transportation with our bus system? So that people can get into the city itself and make it a little easier?
Pay attention, these will be questions that'll come up later, okay?
Uh, I think that that's really violent and and a very important issue that we need to look at, because like, he said it's for single family. They're all single-story, which is kind of neat. Um, I'm looking forward to seeing the plan. On what they're going to look like, because I think that's a, you know, high, high density is great. And it's going to bring more, but I don't see an issue with uh, shopping, or um, are they going to incorporate maybe more schools? Is that gonna be part of uh, bonding? What type of uh, road work will they be doing to help? Right, so those, those are things, but I think that this is actually something that's really good. Like I said, everybody puts the east side down. I live on the west side, but I'll be honest with you. I go shopping to that super target out there, Rocks, okay?
This is really about the financing for this project.
And so the financing for this project, I think is, I mean, thirty million. I know that they're, like I said. This sounds like a great idea, I wanna know more. Um, I think the financing's there, but I think we're on track with 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 bringing this to the A B. Thank you.
Yeah, I have to agree with her, because um, we also wanna know more, trust us. Um, but I think people forget that the new generations coming up don't wanna be tied to owning a home. So being able to rent a home and be able to get up and pack up and move, um, follow the next contract with aerospace or the tech company.
Incorporate it in the same.
Yeah, having, having an opportunity to to rent somewhere and not be locked into a mortgage on a single-family house is really appealing, so. I don't think it's such a bad idea.
So this is, this is about approving a finance vehicle for this project, and it's specific to this project.
Yes.
It's not like the developer can take this and move thirty million dollars somewhere else.
Well, that, he'd have to take that up at the state.
That's what I would think, yeah, so. That suggestion doesn't, didn't, didn't really made it work.
Anybody else, anybody else from the uh, public on this item? Wait, we don't have anybody else in the public, we need a motion to close the public hearing. A motion, a second, all in favor, close the public hearing? Hearing now, no uh, dissent, so ordered. Counsel?
Single-family home zoning, that does allow for an accessory dwelling unit. However, the current bill says that one of the two units has to be owner-occupied. Uh, and that indicates to me that it's a ninety-four uh, lots of division, because then you have a hundred and eighty-eight units. Uh, however, the bill today states that one of the two units has to be owner-occupied. And that is something that is of concern, uh, because if we're promoting um, home ownership. That is great. An accessory dwelling unit can help that homeowner, but one of the two units has to be owner-occupied. I do know that there is an uh, assembly bill coming up, uh, where the state is trying to remove that requirement. Uh, I don't know what we can do to make it a city policy that. One of the two units has to remain as home, as homeowner occupied.
So I think that's specifically why they're not selling the unit, though, and why the whole project is rental. So I think that, I think that's kind of the deal, but I think we'll, the devil's in the details, I think we'll see that when this goes forward. I would encourage you to uh, uh, to have those discussions with the council members, um, and especially. Um, uh, in that area, you've you've got uh, two folks over there that uh, uh, that live, work in uh. It's it's their districts, uh, and uh, everything's my district, but I would suggest you set up some time to have a discussion. And discuss, and go over these, this concept with them when you get an opportunity. But I wanna stick on track here for the city attorney. Hit the buzzer on my seat here, so. Anything else from the council on the, on this issue here? You good? Mister Law, you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Think we have to be creative sometimes, so. It's the slowest machine. I run out of things, so I know it's hard to believe, but it's true. Okay, motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Okay, we're on item number eighteen-two. This is a public hearing and review of ordinance number fifteen thirty-one, uh, amending chapter five point four-four, the municipal code. Relating to mobile home uh, space rent control. Mister Noel, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor, members of the City Council. Uh, this is ordinance number fifteen thirty-one, and I'll read the title of the ordinance into the record. And give the City Council an opportunity to introduce the ordinance. Uh, ordinance number fifteen thirty-one, an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Palmdale. Amending chapter five point four-four of the Palmdale Municipal Code relating to mobile home space rent control. Wish to like to introduce the ordinance for which you prefer to have the staff report first. Pursuant to chapter five point four-four of the Palmdale Municipal Code. Uh, rents for mobile home spaces are controlled to protect mobile home park residents from excessive rents. While at the same time providing a just and reasonable rate of return uh, on investment for owners of mobile home parks. Staff has reviewed the current provisions of chapter five point four-four. And is recommending certain changes to provide for a more effective regulation of mobile home space rents. Um, specifically, staff is recommending uh, the following amendments. Uh, one, requiring additional information and documentation from mobile home park owners regarding what spaces are subject to long-term leases. Two, uh, designating the Director of Neighborhood Services as the hearing officer for resident protests to permissive annual rent increases. And three, adjusting the timeline for processing of annual permissive rent increases. Uh, in addition to that, there are also minor cleanup changes. Uh, our office is available for any questions. In addition, we have the housing staff, which is more knowledgeable in this area, and they're also here to assist you.
Okay, um, so I need a voice vote to introduce ordinance number fifteen thirty-one. I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Was that an aye, Mister Bishop?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so ordered. Okay, so we're gonna open a public hearing and receive testimony. Anybody here to testify on this particular item? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
A motion of multiple seconds, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, um, so, just for clarification, how does this impact the Mobile Home Rent Review Board?
Uh, the current changes that are recommended will not have any effect on the rent review board.
Okay, so you have a hearing officer, but then to review it, the the rent review board is still in intact and will still have their their role in this process?
Uh, correct, the the change that we're contemplating this evening only relates to permissive annual rent increases.
Okay.
And there's an opportunity for residents of a mobile home park um, to contest that.
Right.
And the process for that, for that challenge is is to have, the the hearing officer is uh, currently identified as the housing manager. Um, this change would.
This just cleans it up.
This, yeah, this would just to switch that hearing officer.
Okay, counsel?
No questions for me.
Anybody? Is it back there? You good?
Hi.
Mister Law?
Uh, the uh, lady that was here earlier spoke about the uh, rent increases in her, I I didn't get whether she lived in a city property or not.
Apartment.
It's an, oh, it's an apartment, it's not even a mobile home, okay. So it's only affecting mobile homes, obviously, and then only those that are controlled by the city?
No.
It'll, it only applies to mobile home parks, but not, not the ones that are owned by the city. This would be privately owned mobile home parks. That would be subject to the rent control.
Okay. Any other questions or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number fifteen thirty-one. And? Did you guys push a button there? Okay, there you go. Okay, it's five zero, thank you. Eighteen-three, public hearing review of proposed ordinance fifteen thirty-two for adoption. Um, Mister Oiler or Mister Davis?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'd like to bring forth an ordinance state eighteen thirty-one, eighteen-three A. Ordinance number fifteen thirty-two, an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Palmdale, adopting by reference. The two thousand and nineteen California Building Residential Existing Building Green Building Standards. Plumbing, Mechanical, Electrical Codes, and Title thirteen Los Angeles County Fire Codes, and adopting amendments to said codes.
Excellent. And so I need a voice vote to introduce ordinance number fifteen thirty-two, please?
So moved.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so ordered. We'll open a public hearing and receive testimony on this item. Anybody wish to testify on this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, need a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion? A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hearing no, oppositions, so ordered. Um, so staff recommendation is adopt this ordinance fifteen thirty-two. This is the, these are the state codes with um, some uh, minor tweaks in it relative to our. We can adjust for seismic, climatic, and what's the other one?
Geographic.
Geographic purposes. So this is, this takes into consideration snow load and things of that nature, correct?
And we have adopted a little bit more stricter, stringent snow loads due to past occurrences in the last forty years that we've had in the city.
Alright, any questions of the staff?
No.
Anything? Okay, I need a motion to adopt ordinance number fifteen thirty-two?
Motion to adopt ordinance, second.
Have a motion and a second? To adopt ordinance number fifteen thirty-two?
Have a motion and second, start voting.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, new business. Who's got this one? Mister Lucha? Why don't you read all of it?
A resolution, it is um, to terminate our agreement with Palmdale Energy. Uh, Palmdale Energy is a subsidiary of Summit Power. They were the ones who obtained all of the rights to the power plant. And what's going on is that um, they've been working on the power plant for several years, um. But unfortunately, the climate, when it comes to non-renewable power, is um, not very. Yeah, it is pretty much hostile. Um, although the technology isn't there, although the possibilities aren't there. Really, everyone in the state wants to concentrate on renewables and storage. And so, even though we still believe that this power plant is needed, and um, there probably will be problems in the future. Because we just can't meet the need of the state. If there's no buyer of a power purchase agreement. Really, you can't justify building a power plant. And that's what's going on, and so, uh, just recently, um. Summit had to, or Palmdale Energy, had to pay some dues for some permits. And also, they um, and so, they had to make a decision whether they can justify paying these dues for these permits. Or if they'll just let them lapse. And at the same time, the California ISO, the Independent Services Operator, they're the ones who um. Allow energy to go across the grid to wherever it's needed, decided to terminate their Q agreement. And so, the, it was the answer was that they felt that it was not justified to continue with this project. So they let the permits lapse. The Cal ISO agreement uh, was also terminated. And so they um, there, there's a section in our agreement that allows them to terminate it. And uh, so what you have is a resolution to approve the termination of the agreement. Now, you have a, the, the resolution won't change, but we need direction for the city attorney and the city manager. In negotiating the termination of the agreement on how we would like to proceed. What we recommend is that you proceed with terminating the agreement and abandoning the project. But if you so choose to, you can choose to terminate the agreement and assume responsibility for the permitting and securing a power purchase agreement. Where staff in-house will try to continue with the efforts of trying to get a power purchase agreement for the power plant and. To justify having the funding needed to build it and then have it built. Or we can try to find another power plant uh, operator who would be willing to do that job for us. Uh, we're not very optimistic about the second or third option. We don't think the options are very viable, so. We're recommending that you instruct us to terminate the agreement and abandon the project.
Alrighty, uh, call for public comments. Anybody got any uh, thing they wanna add to this?
Mister Mayor and City Council, good evening. It's such a fun time to be here.
Make sure, make sure your name.
I got to, David Paul. I got to put in a card, and that was really nice. Um, you know, I I wanted to be here on this night. Um, I gotta tell you guys that uh, probably nothing I've seen has unified. The City of Lancaster more than the opposition to this power plant. So, I am here.
There's a few others, but we'll save that for.
Say, I just wanna be present when you put it to rest. That's uh, what I think should happen. And uh, I just wanted to say, what a wonderful time I had tonight. Um, my friend Diana Couch came up here from Alternatives to Violence Program. She's done such good work for the city to help people find. Nonviolent ways to resolve conflict, and there's just so much good energy, and uh. I appreciate everything you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, first of all, I wanna congratulate the Mayor and the councilman for your awards tonight. Appreciate it. Uh, also, I mean, uh, congratulate the council. As you well know, I uh. I attend a lot of meetings here in Antelope Valley of all the different boards, and this is, I'm not trying to flatter you, but it's true. This is one of the best meetings I've ever gone to in Antelope Valley tonight. I really.
And Michael, you didn't say your name. We, I know that you're Michael Revis, but I wanna make sure the public knows who you are.
Okay, thank you. Um, I was one of the people in Lancaster that opposed the power plant. And uh, one of the reasons I did was because I was afraid that we had a earthquake up here, the gas lines would rupture. And would have all kinds of havoc, and also I was concerned about the. and would have all kinds of havoc, and also, I was concerned about the pollution. Uh, that being said, I noticed in the AV press this morning, they mentioned that this property may be used to expand the airport and get airport service back up here, which I think we really need, as you know, if we had the fires and we were stranded up here, we do need some kind of airport service up here. Uh, for example, I'm gonna go to Oakland on Friday, so I have the debate, how do I get down there, and how I get back, and so forth, it would be so much pleasant for everyone if we had our airport. And also, you may wanna consider your friends in Lancaster and ask them if they wanna go in on a airport authority someday, uh, like, uh, Palmdale Lancaster Airport. And hopefully, someday, the legislature will, uh, return the redevelopment agencies back to the city.
We're working on some of the things that Laura was-
Yeah.
We're working on it all the time here.
You know, it could be a pipe dream, but I'll let you know that I, I'm really for the redevelopment agency. And state, stick in their, stop sticking your nose in local business and let the local communities, uh, run their own affairs and planning and building houses.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, uh, for the pleasant evening tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
This is one of those legendary projects-
Name for the, uh-
Uh, Jason's Inc.
Okay.
That was a complete waste of time from the very beginning. I said it from the very beginning, and I was right. I said it about the college property, being on the San Andreas earthquake, wasting five million dollars of the public's money to buy sixty acres on the San Andreas earthquake fault, the biggest earthquake fault in the, uh, western hemisphere.
Kinda try to stick to the particular-
Well, I am, I'm talking about the mistakes of this council, this spinning the wheels, the wasted city's staff and time.
They're trying to fix that right now, sir.
Right, right, but I was right.
Okay, you were right.
Good.
Anything else?
No, the, the, let's talk about it, this power plant, we got, I would have rather had the twenty-eight million dollars spent on that, spent uh, around Corson Park, putting sidewalks in, and helping it, uh, build a downtown, and building the, uh, swimming pool at Corson, uh, the pool for Corson Park, where kids didn't have no pool for eight years. I mean, these high-brain ideas that you guys have, and it's just, I can't believe it, it, it ever happened. I always said, the power plant's a good idea, but you don't put it above five thousand aerospace workers. The, the plume of the cancers, right? You just don't do that. The, I, I, I said the alternative site on, uh, Hundred and Tenth NP was perfect, 'cause you didn't have to bring this, uh, uh, natural gas line, tear up Tenth Street East all the way over to the power plant. It was craziness. Craziness. And just like the college, craziness, five million dollars, if you guys would've spent that money, like I asked you to, on the community, we'd have sidewalks, we'd have tree-lined streets, we'd have a pool, we'd have a community college. I gave you guys eighty-five acres for a community college for East Palmdale and for the southeast Animal Valley. We're, we're paying three hundred million dollars for a storefront college now, we have to deal with, and we have to drive to Lancaster forty-five minutes away, but yet, we're paying three hundred million dollars.
Thirty minutes on the bus.
Huh?
Thirty minutes on the bus.
It doesn't matter, the po- the point is, we got eighty-five acres. Come on, don't you want the east side and Palmdale to prosper?
Yep.
Don't you want that to be an attention drawer? Don't you want developers and people to be excited about Palmdale, and, but we got a storefront campus? That's craziness to me. All this money, all this time, all this staff time.
Talking about the power plant.
Right, the power plant. Yeah, it was the biggest mistake. And who knows how much money, that was eighteen million dollars, how much, how much did people get paid on the back-room deal of it? How about the college property? How many people got paid on the back-room deal of that? You know what I'm saying? This has to end, this has to stop, we gotta start using common sense. We gotta go after LA County for every tax dollar that is be, where you're standing down there, and we gotta stop it. We can't be like second-class stepchildren anymore, we gotta use a lot more common sense. We gotta start promoting Animal Valley. But thank you, mayor, for saying that I was right.
Yep, there you go.
That takes a bit, big man to say that.
Well.
And, and Jason, in defense of my council members, many of them were not even on the council when some of these decisions were made, so I wanted to point that out.
No, that, that's a good point, that's a good point.
Thank you for that. Anybody else? Okay, I need a, uh, oh, just, it was comments, it wasn't public hearing. Uh, council?
Well, one thing's been made clear over time is that there is no room for a gas-powered peaker plant in our community. I think with the current environmental regulations, and, and just with the way it's gone over many, many years, the financial burden it's put on the city that, that this hasn't, this hasn't gone in the right direction for us.
Yeah, the gov- the current governor has made it very clear where he feels, how he, how he feels about it, this, this is not something he's, we would ever, will never prosper with this.
Lights could be out tonight, and he wouldn't approve it.
No.
So.
So.
Alright, do I have a motion?
I'll go ahead and move that item.
Same.
Okay, I have a motion to adopt resolution number CC two thousand and nineteen dash zero eight nine by Mr. Bishop, second by, uh, Ms. Beckwood? Item carries five to zero. Alright, so item number twenty-
Finally done. It's over.
Yes.
Make it go away.
Stuck to your shoe. Alright, special report, this is a revised direction on revenue enhancement proposals. Uh, so, um, back in the last, uh, round of, uh, budget, uh, direction, um, we approved, uh, the budget to, uh, bring in a pollster, uh, to look at, um, a, uh, parcel tax and/or, um, um, a, uh, a sales tax item. Uh, with the hospital and with the fire department moving forward, uh, staff is coming forward here to say we probably need to take the parcel tax off the, uh, off the question-and-answer poll here, huh? So you wanna tell us a little more?
Uh, yes, mayor and council, good evening. Uh, so, that is correct, at the, uh, when we adopted the budget back in June, uh, the council approved the budget resolution, and at that time, uh, the city manager, uh, presented an additional list of revenue enhancement efforts that we wish to, uh, look at pursuing, um, uh, both next year and ongoing to, uh, continue to stabilize the city's revenues. Uh, so during the budget meeting, the council adopted that resolution, and it included, uh, polling for, and, and we have budget, uh, within the budget to do this, polling for both measures, uh, looking at, uh, polling for a sales tax measure as well as for a parcel tax measure. Uh, the parcel tax measure, uh, our initial thoughts were to help support the, uh, development of the museum, uh, space, uh, in the old era building, um, as well as supporting things like library services. The, as mentioned, there's a lot of other efforts going on right now, um, currently, the fire department is considering a parcel tax measure that will either, uh, go forward in March or November, uh, it hasn't been quite decided yet, not that I'm aware of. Um, and so, it was felt that because there would be that kind of competition on a parcel tax, as well as, uh, the idea of the museum has not been vetted enough to really present a proposal to the public to consider that this would not be the ideal time to, uh, go out and poll and solicit feedback from the community about a parcel tax. And so, I'm here tonight to ask for, uh, direction from the council to abandon that for now, and to just focus on polling for a sales tax, um, measure. Uh, in, throughout LA County, uh, there are twenty-seven cities that have already implemented a transaction and use tax. Uh, so this would be to help support general city operations. Uh, we have an ongoing need, as we talk to you about it, budget every year, about, uh, looking for, um, additional revenue sources to, um, continue to stabilize, uh, our, our budget forecast, uh, for the, for the future. Um, and that's really challenging, when you have, um, expenditures like law enforcement that goes up, you know, a minimum of, you know, one and a half or one point two million annually, um, and, you know, that will continue to increase as their costs increase, uh, our purse costs, uh, payroll costs, general operating costs, um, our, will continue to tax, um, our ability to, uh, meet our, our budgetary obligations. So, uh, if we go forward with looking at and polling, um, getting our community's input on what's important to them, uh, what are the, the, the services that they wanna continue to make sure that the city supports, um, we would poll on these questions and come back to the council with feedback of, of, you know, um, what the community's feelings are on that. Uh, ideally, as well, I think the reason that we've seen so many cities throughout, um, Los Angeles County, uh, have already implemented these kind of tax measures is that there is a, you know, possibility that the county might want to go forward and look at, uh, doing their own sales tax measures. And then if, if that's adopted, then the city loses our local autonomy to direct how those funds go. And so, if there is a possibility or a consideration of that, that the community would support that, we wanna ensure that those revenue dollars come directly to Palmdale and that, uh, we have control over how those are spent within our community, and that they're not rolled up into, um, some larger purpose by, you know, the county. And so, uh, my request tonight is to just get, um, uh, just get, uh, the council's blessing on, uh, polling for just the, the sales tax item. Uh, with your approval, uh, we'll engage and finalize the agreement with FM Three, uh, the company that, uh, has, um, a tremendous amount of experience here in California doing, uh, this kind of polling activity. Uh, it would take about five to eight weeks to complete the surveying, uh, that would be conducted throughout the community, and we would be able to provide that, uh, feedback back to the council at that time.
Okay, I know there's like, uh, six, five or six cities that are on off, uh, election, and they're, they're actually voting on that, that again to, today. Uh, also, there's, um, um, with the, um, uh, Amazon versus, uh, uh, Boi- was it Boise or whatever it is? This, this facilitates, this would poten- potentially facilitate being able to recover, uh, transaction taxes-
Yes.
Uh, on that stuff that we're currently losing, uh, 'cause it's, uh, um, from the online sales and things like that?
Yeah, we're continually, continuing to see a larger portion of, um, those online sales, uh, like to Amazon and that, that the city does get a portion of those, uh, sales tax back to our community, and so we have been seeing that increasing over the year, and so this would, uh, qualify on those transactions. And one thing I failed to mention, the council, just giving you a perspective of what, uh, amount of revenue that this could represent to the city. Uh, so based on our current sales tax rate and looking at the, uh, numbers in our eighteen nineteen actuals of, of revenue generated from sales tax, uh, if the city went to a three-quarter cent sales tax, that would represent approximately sixteen million annually to the general fund. Um, if it was a tax rate of half a, half a cent, uh, that would amount to approximately ten point nine million. And, uh, this is, um, a- again, this is, I think, an opportunity for us to have a, uh, have a conversation with our community and see their thoughts on this, see what kind of services, uh, are most important to them, um, and to ensure that we continue to have the means to support those, those services within our community.
Okay, so just, just for clarification, we already voted unanimously to move forward with that, and what the staff is looking for is, asking us to abandon the parcel tax part of it on that.
That is correct.
On that, right now, okay, alright. Um, we have any public comments on this particular item?
Jason's Inc., uh, first of all, I wanna thank the council for allowing the public to speak on these special reports, when people come to do the reports, 'cause, you, you gotta have input from the community. So thank you for correcting that. Also, uh, you know, just like the AV Hospital, you know, they're trying to do a, a six-hundred-million-dollar bond, and, uh, why wouldn't they come to the Palmdale City Council, Lancaster City Council, so they can get on TV and, and get your guys' opinions since you represent us? It's just crazy how they have all these meetings, nobody shows up. Why wouldn't they use this diocese?
They will ask.
It's just, it's crazy to me that, it's just common sense. Uh, but the other thing is, oh, I forgot to bring up, we spent four and a half million dollars for a dry sewer line to the property too. The, you know what I'm saying, so for, that could've been used at four-point sewer, I know, that could've been used at four-point sew. We spent four and a half, half million for that, uh, city property. So, um, but the other thing is, I fully support this, I don't see any way, we cannot have an enriched, beautiful, engaged community without these funds. We don't have billionaires and millionaires that have foundations that will donate money to us. We're middle-class, low, lower-middle-class people. So, we can do this together, and we can enrich our lives and our children's lives and everybody's lives. And, uh, like, uh, Laura, I wanna do that historical Palmenthal Park, I wanna see that accomplished, I'd like to see that done. And I wanna work with you, and when you have time, we can work on that. But that's why I want you guys to do the, uh, uh, have the district committees. So, those people can be your foot soldiers to push these things through, you know, and they can talk and everything like that, or else what's gonna happen?
What district are you in?
Huh?
What district are you in?
Three.
Three.
Okay, we'll talk to her.
Yeah.
We're all having meetings, I don't know where you're at.
Okay.
So.
No, what I'm saying is, there's not, there's not an organization, there's no-
Then, that guy at the end gets all concerned about it, so it works out much easier to have the informal discussions, but I don't wanna burn up your time.
Yeah, but I, I do fully support this, I don't, and I think everybody in the community would, but you need foot soldiers, or things are not gonna pass, people don't like taxes.
Oh, yeah.
And just to let you know, the fire tax is a scam, LA County scam, slush fund, don't support it.
Uh, he's gone, so you wasted, you wasted it all.
It's recorded, though.
Anybody else on this item?
I, I, I like the idea of us being able to tax it and keep it local as opposed to the county in initiating a sales tax and them taking the money again.
Yeah.
So this is our opportunity to, to raise our own tax and keep our money local, and, and use it for what we need.
We're not actually voting on-
No, I'm just saying, it's, it's public wonders.
What we're doing here is, again, the question is, do we take, do we take the parcel tax off? That's the question tonight.
Uh.
And, 'cause we all voted, we all sat here and said, that was a great idea. So I don't, I, nothing's changed except for the fact that now we know that we've got eight million dollars that we're gonna have to come up with within the next three years with the, um, escalating sheriff contract. And we are two years out from turning red.
As, as far as a revenue enhancement effort, I can't, I can't stand behind or support additional sales tax in our city.
You did a few months ago.
I, I supported trying to find additional revenue sources for our city, but I can't get behind the idea of a s- of an additional sales tax, I think it's gonna be hard for the businesses, I think it's gonna deter people from shopping local, I mean, imagine if things cost slightly more in our city compared to our neighbor, neighboring cities.
Well, the shops here.
Okay, hold on, have we, when we've looked at that, at what some other cities have done, that hasn't, that really hasn't shown itself there?
I was, I was gonna say, you and I were talking about this earlier, mayor, but there's a regular sales tax, which is very local, I guess is the way to put it, but there's also transactions and use tax, which is, operates the same way as a sales tax, but it doesn't matter where you buy. Now, if you, if you go to Walmart in Lancaster, you're not gonna get, you'll get charged the local sales tax there. But if you buy a car, you buy, uh, um, out of state, you buy on, online, all of that, you know, transactions and use tax is supposed to be, you know, given credit to Palmdale. So it's a little better, I understand the fear because-
Sales tax, so.
So, but for, especially for big-ticket items, it's not gonna make a difference. And I, if you've ever bought a, a car somewhere else, like, I try not to, but I did a while, a long time ago, I bought a car and-
Long before you are, city attorney, sure.
And it was, you know, at that time, their, their sales tax rate was seven point five, LA County was nine, I believe. And I thought, oh, whoo, whoo, I'm gonna save money. No, it doesn't matter where you are, you still get taxed here, especially on the big-ticket items. And the online is supposed to be all, um, set up the same way. So there will be some leakage, but not as bad as, you know, you might think.
I still think it makes a difference, I think people are on tight budgets and, and, uh, I, I wouldn't wanna do anything to jeopardize the sales in our community, i- it does make a difference, a, a, a thirty-thousand-dollar Honda is a difference of three hundred and fifty bucks. I mean, it's groceries, it's everything retail, it's one of our major businesses here, and I can't swallow the idea of, of things costing a little bit more in this city than they would in the neighboring community.
I'm not hearing an alternative.
I think we need to find more creative and different ways to find-
I'm still not hearing an alternative, sir.
Well, that's why we need to reach out to a consultant that can show us the way, or can, can show us how to bring in more revenue without taxing-
So, how about we, how about, how about we raise our waste management rates twenty-five percent like other communities have done? The, you can't get away without not paying that. I, I, I was shocked when I saw those numbers, okay? And, um, yeah, we could, we could even add on a question, does a city, th- the residents want us to abandon our policy on cannabis and open up cannabis shops and potentially bring in money there? But I think the question before us here tonight is- But I think the question before us here tonight is, we're not talking about, uh, about adding on a tax. All, what we're talking about here is, we already made that decision six months ago.
Austin, there, there's nobody on this council that makes less money than me. I'm a single mom. You guys know what I make. And when I, and I'm a homeowner, so for me, do I want you to put something against my home that I have to pay every year? Or do I want it to be fairly spread across all people who use the parks and all the people?
And have, have the option.
Uh, uh, you know, and, and if I, it, do, do I purchase enough that was, it's gonna hurt me for a, a half cent or a, a three quarter cent? No, I don't, I don't believe that that's gonna bother my income. But what I don't like is for me to be punished because I'm a homeowner when so many people from Lancaster and Rosemont come into our city and, and, and use our resources, let them pay part of that, of that, um, of that tax. Does that make sense?
I think, well, all we're, all we're doing here.
And if, if I can afford it, I, I think, I think the general public can afford it.
Yeah, all, all we're doing here is.
I think it's gonna deter sales away from our area.
Well, I, I disagree. They need to ask, I, I think that the most representative form of government is, is, uh, letting your voters decide.
No, that's true.
And, and I think that, that, uh, going out, and I think there's gonna be plenty of time that if, uh, if people want to campaign against it, there's plenty of time to do that. But I think that getting a representative sampling from the, the, the communities across.
Yeah.
The, uh, uh, the, um, South Annalow Valley here and what their feelings are. Look, if it comes back and people are telling us sixty, seventy percent are saying, you're out of your mind, there's no, there's no way in hell that I'm gonna move forward with that.
I'm totally.
I think we need to find out from the voters though.
Let's let them decide.
What do the voters want to do here? Do they, do they want us, we got, how many deputies that they want us to cut? How many, how many of these guys we want to send home, you know, next year? Eight mil- eight million dollars over the next three years we gotta come up with. Eight million.
It's my understanding that the survey will be evenly distributed amongst the districts. So we'll get a fair assessment of how each district feels about this, um.
I'm pretty sure.
That's correct.
And that sets up a, that sets up a problem because, um, polling in one district may be in favor of, uh, sales tax increase and, uh, another district might be well opposed to it. I think that if we are voting on whether we should, uh, eliminate the parcel tax from the poll, it doesn't mean that we're still tied or required to conduct a poll, are we?
Well, if, if the council wishes to consider putting a tax measure on the ballot, we would highly encourage that there be polling to, um, help, uh, determine, you know, what the questions are that are asked, um, what the community's will is.
There's a clock ticking right now.
If I was a renter, I'm like, yeah, tax the homeowners. Why would you not say that?
Should be.
You know?
Earlier tonight, we received a report that essentially is saying, raise all these impact fees, all these different fees in order to, uh, you know, service all of these different services that the city provides. Now we're being said, now we're being asked to conduct a poll, which I think is really a message saying that this council desires to impose a sales tax. And, um, I am gonna agree with Mr. Bishop. Um, I don't want to go in that direction. And, uh, I think that we do need to find other sources of revenues to match these shorts that, uh, that are apparently coming our way.
And I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what happened in the last, since, uh, March when we voted to do that.
Well, a lot of time has gone by.
We, we.
For one.
I, I think we've seen more and, and, and the other thing we're not considering is we're looking at twenty to thirty percent increase in our liability costs with the sheriff's liability trust fund. Because they've already told us that needs to go up to thirteen to fifteen percent. So that, I mean, how do we absorb that?
I think we need to be better tax advocates from, for, we need to be better tax advocates and get more from the county. It's despicable the return we get from the county. We need to, we need to fight more for what our fair share is.
That, you don't understand what a liability fund works on. Cause that has nothing to do with what the county.
I mean, this, this, this city should be flush with funds, but it's, there's been ten to twenty years worth of mistakes that have got us to this point, the power plant being one of them. And this is why we're in this position.
Alright, so I'm still looking for an alternative. We voted a few months ago.
We voted to, for revenue enhancement, not.
No, this was specific. It was, this was specific.
Well, Mayor, with all due respect, I don't, I don't think that the vote tonight on this issue requires that we provide an alternative.
This is just for the survey, right?
Question is whether we should conduct a poll to increase the sales tax.
Everybody down the board supervisors.
We, we, we already, we already asked that question. The staff is asking us whether or not we're going to, uh, move forward on, uh, by remove and remove the, uh, uh.
So I ask the question again, and I want a response from whoever knows the answer. Are we, are we bound to conduct a poll by the vote that we took earlier this year? Are we bound to do a poll? And you said only if we are considering, uh, placing a sales tax or a parcel tax increase on the ballot. And I don't think we should move in that direction. And I think that voting for conducting a poll is a signal to the community that this council wants to increase sales tax.
I would look at it a different way. I, I would look at it as this council trying to enhance the public safety of the community. Whatever is, whatever the revenue comes in, it's gonna be to pay the shortfalls on the public safety through the counter with the sheriff's department.
And, and I look at it as a way of giving the public a voice. If we just make decisions without asking the public, then I, I think that's inappropriate. I think this needs to go out to the public. I think we need to know what they think and how they feel.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, uh, I think what it comes down to is, is that, uh, if, if the, if the council sits here, I, I don't want another tax either. Okay, I'm, I don't, I don't like.
But I can tell you right now, the public doesn't, doesn't like taxes.
Okay, but.
People feel like they've been taxed to death.
Every single one of these local.
But if it's for better schools and better parks, I think they're willing to pay it.
All, the, the vast majority, if not all of these local ones, when, when the money stayed local, they passed overwhelmingly. So, I mean, you know, I, that's not our community, but it's, it's a very serious trend that's been going on out there. So. I mean, you know, I, I think that, I think it's, I think we're, um, we're sending the wrong message if we're saying, we don't want the public to have a say. Because they're gonna have two says. They're gonna be able to give us their input during the, uh, during the polling. And then if the polling indicates that there's a good chance of, that the public wants this, they'll also have the opportunity in November to make that choice. But you wanna be the guy that sits up here and screams and yells and hollers and pounce your fist on the table?
I'm not screaming and hollering.
No, no.
I'm advocating for my community and for my resident.
You didn't let me finish the question, sir.
You, you're the one talking over me.
Let me know when you're done. Okay, I'll just push back here. Let me know when you're done and then I'll, I'll, I'll ask my question again.
I'm good, I'm done.
Okay, so are you the, gonna be the guy that's gonna sit here and scream and holler and yell when the county or another taxing agency grabs that money and it all goes over the hill like every damn other tax? Like the transportation tax, we're only getting back sixteen cents on the dollar. You're paying that tax every day. And it, a sales tax and that's going over the hill. You're paying a park tax that's going over the hill. We just had a community member come up here and, and chastise us because how much goes out of the county? We, there's the potential that we can capture that, cut them off at the pass before Jesse James grabs that, uh, you know, that, uh, that, uh, that wagon and stop the county and stop these other taxing agencies from grabbing it. But I think we gotta ask the, the community what, get the pulse of the community. What do they want to do? I would rather have a situation where we can allow the community to make an informed decision on this issue. And then if it passes in November, as they make purchases, they can make decisions as opposed to implementing things like increased trash fees and laundering money over to the county, to the city through, from a mandated fee that they can't get away from, you know? Um, I looked at that. I don't know that we wanna sit here, and we could, I suppose we could probably add a poll question. Does the community want us to go in the direction of bringing cannabis into the community, you know?
We had that conversation.
Yeah, but I, you know, I mean.
That's why we had the marijuana group, remember? We've already asked that question of the public.
So, I mean, these, these are some of the solutions that are out there, but like you're pointing out, I, I'm not convinced it that a, uh, a mandated payment, a twenty percent or more mandated payment uh, for, for fees that you can't get away from, or bring it in something like, uh, cannabis program here is, is gonna be the solution either. So we have a lot of things that we want to be able to do. We're, we're doing a, a great rate on our, on our crime rates here, are continually looking better and better and better. Uh, I'm reluctant to, to, uh, be faced with having to reduce deputies. Or what else? What, what do we, what do we, do we, do we go back and decide to sell the, the, the playhouse? Or do we close the library and go back down to two days a week in the library? What do we do? I mean, I think we're, we, we're in a position where we've been bringing all these programs, bringing these services back to the public. We're doing what the public's been asking us to do. I think we've gotta ask the public, listen, there's certain things that are out of our control, such as things like the sheriff's budget. We, and, and the board of supervisors has beat, beaten them up on a regular basis on that, but we don't have the ability to control that. Well, actually we do. We can cut deputies. So, I mean, that's, that's gonna be, that's the biggest nut we're gonna have to crack this next, this next, uh, year or two.
Can I just interrupt here? Cause I think we're getting, we're getting into taxes and all of that. And this is just amending the prior direction of council to do a sales and use tax and a transaction tax. And I, it will, we're getting kind of far afield. All staff, at least Anne, I think is looking for is.
Let me ask you the question, Mr. Ditzhazy.
Yeah.
If we approve, if we don't approve this tonight, does that mean that we have to conduct a poll because our hands are tied and we must conduct a poll? Including both aspects.
It's just the staff, I mean, the council gave the general direction to the city manager, to, to Anne and that to do a poll, don't necessarily have to do it.
Right.
But, um, you know, we tend to try to act on council's direction and it was the direction of, I, I think with the whole council, I don't remember.
Was it unanimous approval?
Right.
Pardon, on, on that, so, but the discussion here is really about, you know, the tax. But I understand where you're coming from, Councilmember Loa, because you're talking about just raising the issue is gonna make it look like the council's behind it.
Right, exactly.
And that, that is one way to look at it, but I.
I don't, I don't.
And I, I, I want to, I want to join in, in another one of Bishop's, Mr. Bishop's comments, and that is I think it does have an impact on our, on our local businesses, particularly with our auto dealers. And, um, I think that it, it probably would hurt business.
Long meeting with those guys this morning. I get that. I get that.
So, um, you know, it just seems to me that, you know, everyone wants to raise taxes, everyone wants to raise fees. And we have thousands of people leaving the state of California for that very reason. And, um, you know.
Well, I think they're leaving for a lot more reasons than that.
Support sing, ascending that, that signal to the community.
Um, we have this major conversation up here and I think there's some members of the public that wanna reengage and have a conversation. Can we reopen public hearing? So they can speak?
Well, we, we can, but here's the deal. We.
I'd move to reopen, reopen the public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, well, no one, as someone that hasn't spoken, wanna come up?
She's been talking.
I haven't spoken on this, no. Okay, I live in your district, Austin. And guess what? I don't want a parcel tax on my property. I think our properties have been taxed enormously. And I think that it's fair to go out and ask the people at large, do we wanna be able to have a one percent or a three quarter percent or a half per, or a half cent tax that's gonna stay here? And not have it come from the county where they're gonna take it and it disappears. So I am part of that. And by the way, I don't get to work because I take care of my eighty-six year old father. I live on one single income, one. So when I go out and do what I do, I do it from here, okay? So it's, 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 this is something that's important for all of us to have, to, to, to have a poll, to poll the public and say, this money's gonna stay here, the county doesn't get to take it away. Putting that in simple language so they understand it and asking them the question is not gonna hurt us. I think that this is something that's important for us as a community. We're looking at revenue. What are we gonna do to keep things here? And not have it disappear. And I disagree that people are, are not shopping. We get everybody that comes here to Palmdale. We are the only ones that have a mall here. We're the only ones that have Dillard's here. And by the way, CBD is sold at Dillard's, Macy's, all these wonderful places. So, yeah, you know, no, no, I'm just saying. So those, those types of revenues, you know, we can, we can use those as well. But we have the mall here, we have the shopping here, the restaurants are here, people do spend their tax dollars here. And we can keep it here if we're willing to do that.
Now, Mr. Mr. Loa had a very valid point and, and I wanna, uh, uh, I thank you for bringing this up. The, um, the question comes up as far as, um, the, the, somebody looking to buy a car and he's, wait a second, the sales tax is less than Lancaster. Um, but no, it isn't because on a transaction, uh, deal, um, what, uh, whatever, whatever.
Transaction and use tax.
Transaction and use tax. Um, that, that, that's, it's exactly the same. It doesn't change. Now, someone may choose to spin it, and I already heard that threat this morning that, hey, I got Tom, Dick, Harry and Joe are all gonna put banners out to say our taxes are lower. Well, that's actually false advertising and it's illegal, okay? So I followed up on that. And I followed up on the suggestions that I was being given by, uh, other members of the community to look at some of these other, you know, huge revenue enhancements. So that's why I asked the question. Are we willing to, um, go out to ask the public or are we gonna have to? We got, we got a year, ladies and gentlemen. We got a year and that, that next contract's gonna hit us. And that's, that's gonna be a couple of million next time around because it escalates each time. It's a, it's a, um.
And if the county taxes us, it doesn't get to stay there.
Yeah, so. Yes, come on up, sir.
Alright, Steve Saint.
Yep, and your name for the record? Steve Saint. I thought you said Steve Saint. That's good. Go ahead, sir.
Alright, yeah, so I wanted to see if we could do a poll here first, see if we wanted to have more taxes. Anybody? Raise your hand if you want to have your taxes raised.
If it stays my.
It's not the way. You talk to us.
One, two. Hey, that's my gavel, sorry.
You talk to us.
So I think what we need to do is reduce the size of government, not increase it and to keep causing us, costing us more. I mean, less government means more freedom for us. What does word government mean? Govern, control, meant, mind. It means mind control. Let's reduce it. Thanks.
Okay, and we have the, one of the smallest staffs per capita
Yeah.
of any city in probably California. So it's amazing what we do with what we've got. So, uh, if this is about, part of it's about keeping what we've got. So, um, I don't know if we put it out there. You know, do, do you wanna close the library and rely on the county? We got a county library over here. How much can we save by closing the library?
Yeah.
Well, I re, I was here when we closed the children's library and that was heartbreaking.
I, I think, what I'm trying to, uh, say is that there has to be other ways of raising revenue, uh, other than increasing taxes. And if we vote, and it's, has already been explained by Mr. Ditzhazy, um, and Anne, we're not required to conduct a poll. And I think that we are sending the message and I think the discussion tonight shows that the, um, balance on this, uh, city council wants to raise a city tax, a sales tax.
Did, did you say that?
Tax.
I said I wanna provide a safer community.
What, what was your?
And I said, I wanna hear what the people think.
I'm taking issue with your comments.
Opinion.
Okay, that's exactly what I said.
What I heard is what I heard and it sounds like the balance of, on this council wants to, uh, send a message to raise a sales tax and, or a use tax here in the city of Palmdale. And I think that's the wrong message to send to our people. And I think what we ought to be doing is we have some very fertile minds that work on this staff and we have some very energetic people and we're about to move into a new direction with a new city manager and no reflection on our current city manager, cause I think he's done an outstanding job. Um, but we're gonna move forward and we need to move forward with other ways that are not going to tax our community any further. If the county wants to pass a tax, that's their thing.
They're going to.
Well, I'm saying that our city has to find other means to raise revenue.
Then why have we not done it before now?
No one is saying that we don't want less public ser, uh, public safety. Of course we want public safety. And of course we want all the different amenities that we were talking about. But I think that we send the wrong message when we say we want to poll you to see if you agree with us that we need to raise a sales tax.
I don't believe that's what the poll's gonna say.
Opinion. I'm giving my opinion.
Alright. Well, everybody's got an opinion like everybody's got a belly button, you know? I think the question here is, I, I'm not saying I wanna raise taxes. I'm saying I wanna hear. I'm saying I wanna hear from the public about what do they wanna do here? I think that our direction to the staff has always been to uh look more closely at at the budget. Maybe we need to have a budget committee. We sit down and we can decide how many pencils and erasers and 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 tires we buy, you know? So we'll take a look at that.
I'm good with that.
Uh, but at the same time. If, we have a clock that's ticking, and if the public turns around and says, yes, they wanna move that measure forward. If we don't act and 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 provide that direction to the staff, or if there's a motion that says, kill all polls. Then, then we're throwing up our hands and uh just hoping that something else comes down the pipe. I don't, and hope is not a good plan. Uh, I, uh, we've all seen where every single expenditure category is going up. To maintain the current level. Is there anybody on this council that wants to cut services or programs?
Nope.
Of course not. Okay, so. We've, we've slashed this stuff to the bone already, so.
And just to, to, just to kind of close for the staff side, um. Every year when we have presented the budget, you know, we, we, right now, we enjoy a thirty percent reserve. And it's taken some very strong effort on staff's part to, you know, make sure we get to that point and. That we're currently maintaining a high reserve to be able to weather the the dramatic dips when.
Well, that's why your audit comes in so high above a lot of other communities.
Right, so, but we, we've um mentioned every year in our budget discussions that that is not, you know, ongoing and sustainable without additional revenue sources. And so that if we don't find ways to, you know, dramatically, you know, find other revenue sources, that this in the long term is going to. Um, and in the not so long term, like within the next few years, uh really um change that balance of our revenues to our expenditures. And uh staff continually look for efforts to do that. I mean, you see with the efforts, uh, you know, collectively across the organization, particularly in public works. The amount that they collect in uh various grants and the aggressiveness that the city has of going after grants for funding different programs. Uh, but again, those are limited. Uh, they're very specific use. They don't fund ongoing operational costs, which is really what. Uh, some of these measures are looking to consider. Um, so I think staff are and continue to look for all different ways, and this is one of those ways to try to. Provide stability within our budget. Ten million dollars into the 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 funds, general type of operations, whether it's public safety or code enforcement or parks. Is not an insignificant amount of money. And unfortunately, in government, we are limited and we're not like a private entity, we're not a private business where we can go out and raise our own revenues. We have to look at the types of measures that are available for us. Um, taxation is one of those, fees is one of those. Um, and then um it does come down to what can we afford to do? What are the programs that are the priority of the community or the priority of the council that? Um, if we have limited amount to invest in, that those are the things that we provide, and then at what cost to something else? And those are the difficult budget decisions, difficult policy decisions that the council have to look at. Um, when the economy did uh make its dramatic downturn, uh those were the very dramatic uh decisions that had to be made in the community. And you've, you know, all as residents here saw what the impacts of that were. And so we're, you're ongoing, we continue to look at all efforts. Um, those two efforts that I brought forward tonight are two of the items that have been on the list. Uh, to help find those stable for, sources to help continue to fund the ongoing um expenses that aren't going to go down anytime soon.
I get a, I get, Captain can tell you, because I sent him to him. I get a number of uh complaints every week on response times because of the lack of coverage. For the less than immediately urgent calls. People are routinely waiting three, four hours of tailing, telling our guys, never mind. So when I've got two cars covering the entire west side of the city from Division West, uh that's unacceptable to me. We got eighty percent of the resources on the east side of town. Uh, it's, i- in our communities, Anaverty, uh, the uh, the Ridge Communities, the Rancho Vista area, uh, the far west side. Um, you know, we, we, we deserve a a a better level. We wanna enhance that. We're gonna struggle just to maintain it, so.
That's my understanding is that uh this, if in fact the sales tax were to be approved. It's not really going to uh direct itself to increasing uh the strength of our sheriff's department here. It's just going to be to maintain where we're at. These increases from the sheriff's contract increases the amount that we, that the city has to pay.
Yeah.
But does not increase the strength of our deputy force here in town.
And that's, that was exactly my point. We're already at a point where it's not.
Stop bickering on the sheriff's department for five minutes? That's not what the topic is really about. You know, I, as a sheriff's department employee, I take offense to this constant, you know, bickering over patrol and where cars are. Um, I, I know where our patrol cars are. We do a great job with the staff that we have. And I would like for, for this council to give our sheriff's department some damn credit.
Oh, no.
For doing an excellent job, and I don't know of rarely any time where there's only two patrol cars anywhere, because I sit and listen to the radio all day long. But I, I would just like to get off the backs of the sheriffs right now.
Well, I agree with Councilperson Beddington. The problem is that this sales tax isn't going to address the problem that you have, Mayor. Uh, or the issue that you raised, that we, that this tax, you seem to be um insinuating or 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 arguing. That if we get the sales tax passed, and right now, we're just voting about whether we should do a poll or not, and not whether a sales tax should be imposed. But even if the sales tax isn't taxes imposed, it's not going to address the issue of strengthening our sheriff's department. It's just to maintain it from what I understand. Because the sheriff's department is increasing the amount of money that the city has to pay on its contract year after year. We have to find other revenue sources. No one wants to argue that we should have any lesser, strong sheriff's department. No one wants to say that. I certainly don't. And uh, but what I'm saying is that what we need to do is not send the wrong message to the community. And I think Mr. Murphy wants to say something.
I, I just wanna say that everything goes up, our, our staff salaries go up, our pensions go up, it's not just the sheriff's department.
Of course, you're right.
The cost of paper and ink and water goes up every year also. It's not just the sheriff's department.
So that the, the fact of the matter is, it's our single largest, single, single largest.
But that's not the topic at hand right now.
Well, I think it's, I think it's important, though, we wanna, we want to maintain and certainly would like to increase that coverage. We'd like to build more parks. We'd like to add more code enforcement. We'd like to do a lot of things.
My, my main concern that if this passes is that the effect it's gonna have on our local businesses and the people that come to to town to shop from the other areas.
We're not passing anything but although on a survey.
I said if.
And, and that, and that has not been substantiated in other communities, though. Where's that happen?
Can I just?
No, I, where that, where's that happen?
I haven't seen anything in writing that the county.
Welcome aboard, sir.
That the county is gonna do this. I haven't seen anything yet.
No, but I, I, just wait a second, I'm still looking. Where's that happen? Where's your, where's this sales, where's it, where's that impact, negative impact occurring?
That's one of my concerns.
Okay, but where's, what, based on? Other than somebody chewing on her ears, where is, what's the basis of that?
That if something costs more in one area, people are gonna seek it out where it costs less.
So you missed, you missed the whole discussion that said that if you wanna buy a car and you go, you go to Lancaster or Amiens or or Arizona.
I don't know, people pay for condoms.
This is, so it's everything now. Like groceries, you know, mattresses. Going out to eat dinner, it's everything.
Right.
That's all.
Right.
What?
Go ahead.
Hello? Uh, good evening. I, I'm not even sure it's, you know, I know there was a couple of comments made, and I wanna just maybe correct the record and get. A little bit what my plan is moving forward with some of the comments that were made. First off, uh, Councilman Law, your, your question about if a sales tax or. Uh, was, was the pass, could it potentially increase public safety? And, and I'm here to tell you, yes, absolutely. The reason we're trying to poll is to hear from the public, not just, and 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 I was on the call with Anne and Jim with the consultant. To get a flavor from the public so we can make data-based decisions. Do they wanna see enhanced parks? Do they wanna see enhanced enhancements to our public safety? So what, what we're asking for, and it's kind of bookended on, we started at six o'clock tonight talking about our fees. And and we don't pay enough for our fees, and do we wanna raise all our fees? I think we're gonna be lined up to have conversations in late January or early February that talks about. Here's what polling data says, what the public wants, here's what the fees are, you've investigated it over the last sixty to ninety days. And what's our appetite? I absolutely agree with both of you, that our community does not wanna get taxed to death, right? But you also heard at the beginning of this meeting that we're undercharging for a lot of our services. So what's the correct balance? All we would like to do from a staff perspective is have the poll take place to hear what the public says on not just public safety. On enhanced parks, on, on, on some of the other things that we're gonna ask the question on. And yes, if a tax were to move forward and a tax were, the public was to pass it, we could potentially, it goes into the general fund. This body votes on, what that, that eleven million dollars that we talked about, fourteen million?
Ten, yeah, eleven million or sixteen million.
Right. This body gets to vote in your budget annually where we wanna allocate that. What the mayor was referencing, yes, there are gonna be increases, not just in the sheriff's department, in, in other things. But we have an opportunity here to get the data so that we make more informed decisions three months from now. And I just wanted to point that out.
And what I'd like to point out to you, Mr. Murphy, is that I'm expecting and hoping that you will find alternate sources for bringing in revenue to the city. You're gonna bring that energy, that passion to do those things. That's what I'm looking for. I don't think that we ought to send a message to the community that we ought to be raising their sales tax. You know, that the responsibility of the city council of the city of Palmdale. I'm opposed to that.
I, I hear you loud, I hear you loud and clear, and I work, and the staff worked tirelessly on, on additional efforts. You had that commitment.
Okay, let me talk a little bit about getting creative and revenue numbers and so forth. So over the past four years. We've refinanced all the city's debt, we've gone to waste management, got a bigger franchise fee without raising rates, actually, the residential rates went down. We've done probably a dozen different revenue numbers totaling sixty million dollars. Over the next twenty years, and that's what put us on the footing we are now, where we have a thirty percent reserve. Is the work we've done over the past four years, and we started doing five-year projections, which had never been done before, so the council never had an idea of what. Things looked like going forward, and now we're looking five years out, and we're seeing, you know, sorry, Laura, the sheriff's contract going up. Two million a year for the next four years. And the purse costs going up, not because we're getting more benefits, but because purse is changing the formula, and the governor's divesting us from decent investments. So that uh purse can have a good return. So these are things totally out of our control. That are driving up our costs so that five years out, when we're looking at our projections going out further. You know, we're keeping our staff costs low, you know, we cut staff fifty percent during the recession. I, I don't know of any other government that did that. We've only grown staff about twelve percent in the last four years, but we're, we're offering probably double the amount of services and events. Uh, that we were offering four years ago. And so, you know, to say that we need to get creative and look for revenue sources and and look for cost-cutting measures. When we've cut sixty million dollars or generated sixty million in revenues, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't answer the question. Sure, there's more things we're looking at, we're looking at monetizing our fiber, we're looking at monetizing the streetlights, those programs are all underway. We're looking at the airport, we're looking at economic development that's gonna revolve around the train. You know, there's dozens of initiatives. But we need some sure thing numbers going forward and to understand what the public wants. So that we can see where we're gonna be. So if you do, if a sales tax measure were to pass next, next year. And it generates ten million dollars a year, but our sheriff's cost is going up two million dollars a year. We're ahead of the game, you know, or you do a quarter cent or whatever, you know, those are the questions that need to be asked. Is, is this gonna be a five-year tax? Is this gonna be a ten-year tax? Is it gonna be a quarter of a cent? Is it gonna be a half a cent? And what can we?
That's what the poll.
That's what the polling information will give us, and the level of support the public might have for these things. And so, um, you know, for thirty-one years, I've been in this business, and I've had councils telling me to get creative. And I can tell you, I'm probably one of the most creative financial minds in government as far as what we've been able to do and accomplish. In this city and prior cities, um. To generate revenue, save the taxpayer dollars, and what I'm seeing is that five years out, if we don't. Get some guaranteed income coming in that's above what we've, we're projecting, that, you know. And, and the worst thing is that five years, we're at seventeen percent reserves, which is what most cities strive for. They're hoping to get seventeen percent. We're at thirty percent right now. We were at forty-one percent uh about a year and a half ago. Uh, and so, you know, we're seeing the writing on the wall that the costs are going up faster than the revenues. Yes, there are things we can do, uh, but, you know, monetizing our fiber, monetizing the streetlights. Uh, and some of the other things are gonna take some time. We'll get some of those answers over this next year. We'll get more answers on investment in the airport, investment by version trains, et cetera. Uh, but I think those things uh are just part of the whole picture. So I think there's the creative side, and there's the other side of. The sales tax is gonna get increased, it's either gonna stay here or it's gonna go to the county of LA and we're not gonna see it, or we're gonna see ten cents on the dollar. I mean, that's really kind of what uh, what's driving this. And and as far as the uh, the, the issue of polling. Uh, I had my direction from the city council to move forward with polling on a parcel tax and a sales tax. I, we did an RFP, we have the consultant. But between the express was, or the concern that was expressed by uh some of the city council members and the fact that the uh. Hospitals coming out with a bond, which would be a parcel tax, and the fire department looks like they're gonna move forward with a parcel tax. I felt that we needed to bring this back to the council for a robust discussion, which we've had in regard to, um, do we wanna modify polling? Uh, you know, I could have at my, you know, at my discretion, gone forward and just said, yeah, staff, go ahead and and award the contract. And let's get the polling out there, but I knew that there was a lot of concern there, and in particular. Why do you two ta- you know, to poll on two taxes when we're probably not gonna compete against the hospital or the, you know, the fire department in regard to a parcel tax? And so, uh, I wanted to bring this back so we could have that discussion, uh, see where it goes. Um, but I'll let you know that this staff has been incredibly creative in addressing a lot of the issues. We have an eighty-five million dollar general fund budget, we have a two-hundred-and-forty-million-dollar capital budget, most of which is grant money. And funds that staff has gone out and procured for this city, three times what our general fund budget is. There's no city around that, most cities have a capital budget of about one-tenth of our capital budget. And so, when you look at some of those things, uh, staff is doing a monumental job with the amount of taxpayer dollars that are coming into the city. Versus the amount of benefit that the city's getting uh for what we, uh, what you would see in, in any other city our size.
Part of the uh, part of the thing that uh I think we see some shift that has been going on too, and that's why we've been beating the, the, the halls of Sacramento and every place else. For grants is, we're down forty million a year. Uh, these roads and a lot of these projects and things that we previously funded, we had deputies that we funded out of redevelopment. Because they were in neighborhoods that were redevelopment neighborhoods. We had code enforcement that was there, we had park improvements that were going on, we had roads that were being fixed. You know, I have that forty million anymore, and I've been banging my head against the wall in the last two weeks. I'm having meetings with other cities, I'm having meetings with other consultants, so here's, here's the solutions that I'm getting. Well, get more creative with your waste management contract. I don't wanna raise our, um, a fee that you can't get out of. Twenty or thirty percent. I don't think that that's fair for people that are on a fixed income. They can't get away with it. Um, we've already had the whole discussion on the. We've already had the whole discussion on the on a cannabis tax, you know. Could we, could we raise money with the cannabis tax? The cannabis income with the canopy tax? Yeah, but we we had a, we had a huge discussion about that. Again, I don't wanna raise the taxes, but I do want to hear from the general public. And I I just think that it's presumptuous on our part to say that the public isn't educated enough to be able to tell us.
Because you know what, I I remember when the public had the wisdom to go ahead and approve those uh the park bonds. So that we have a water park and we have Recur Park Amphitheater. That was a decision that the public said, yes, we're willing to pay that to have those kind of services in our city. So don't underestimate the intelligence and the wisdom of our residents because they will do what they think is right for themselves and for this community and for their families. I have one more thing I wanna say. Yes, I understand the sheriff's department's contract is going up, but what I don't appreciate is this is not the forum to complain about response times. And how many cars are on patrol. That's for a different day, a different time. And if you're gonna, you know, constantly bash the sheriff's department, let's talk about some of the good things that they do too, about how we engage with the community and how.
Every day.
The public, really, cuz I didn't hear it here tonight.
Well, you're not around any place to hear it, that's why.
I didn't hear it here tonight.
You did, you missed the whole discussion up here. I'm on in the community every day and the first thing I tell everybody is what a great job these guys are doing. But that they're cut short, that we have a hard time with.
I understand that, but we're, that was not the issue tonight.
I I think everything is the issue tonight, and it's not a matter of I'm not bashing our deputies. I am, I am not bashing our sheriff's department.
I don't hear you ever bashing the fire department.
Because they've got, they've got a parcel tax, ma'am, and they figured it out.
And no one complains about their response times ever?
Well, because they.
Really?
I I haven't got, I don't know that I've gotten one.
Let's not go down that road.
I think, I think, I think that the issue is if we want to improve on things, if we wanna maintain and or improve. We've gotta figure out a way to do it. I think we need to ask the public, what do you wanna do?
So I make a motion.
I second it.
We move forward, we give and start direction to do this survey and remove the parcel tax. That's what this is about.
May I make a, may I make a comment? Mr. Partey, I think you illustrated brilliantly. What I commented on earlier that I thought that you'd been doing a magnificent job for the city of Palmdale. I think that you've you've outlined it. But I also think that we need to move in a direction where we save the people from the sales tax. And I think that, you know, every conversation we've had tonight. Has assumed that there's going to be an approval of sales tax. And that's, that's where it seems to be going, the the discussion here tonight. So I have a question now. It is this, will it, I think where this, where the vote, I think I know where the vote is gonna go tonight. So assuming that happens, are we going to have input on the questions that are gonna be posed by the pollsters?
We can certainly uh provide that kind of in, we're gonna solicit input from you of what kind of questions uh that go out. To kind of be clear to a little bit of the point that this would be a general sales tax, it can't be kind of a singular issue tax. Or if I'm correct, that that will raise the, if if we said that we just wanted to, you know, do a sales or transactional use tax on. Just for public safety or some very singular focus, uh the threshold for approval becomes two thirds of the vote, if I'm correct. Uh so this would be a general tax measure if it was something that was put on the ballot. Uh to go towards supporting the kind of programs that the that the community is saying is most important. But certainly I can solicit that feedback from the council of what uh kind of information uh you wanna make sure is kind of considered in that questioning.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think we've all gone over this enough and. And uh kinda found out where everyone's at, so. I think we've all set our pace. Yeah, let's call the question.
So for for the record, I don't think anybody's saying raise the taxes as might have been portrayed. I think the question is, are we, we are removing the parcel tax from the polling options? That's, that was the staff recommendation, just for clarity.
Okay.
Okay, alright, so we have a motion in a second?
Yes.
Okay. I don't wanna have a parcel tax on there, so. Three, two. Okay, is the message that we want the parcel tax in?
Well, the message is we don't want any taxes.
Then maybe we should have a substitute motion to take it all off. Alright, okay, hey, I need to take a break. You wanna start the uh the other discussion, but I'm about an hour and fifteen minutes past my deadline.
Alright, that brings us to uh informational report from the mayor and council members on various committee memberships, meetings attended at public expense. Um I'll start with the uh, the first one since I was at ABA QMD. Uh we had a couple of things. We awarded a little over sixty five thousand dollars to Caiocan Cow Ranchers for purchase of uh newer equipment. Newer diesel, so they can get rid of their old diesel equipment. For their ranch. And then another interesting uh thing we're looking into, it's a, it's a truck conversion. For existing trucks to be turned into battery power. I believe it's uh it's for two or three trucks. But what they're gonna do is they're gonna take existing city vehicles. Or existing vehicles that are in service, older vehicles or or specifically trucks that that. Use a lot of gas, cuz there's no electric trucks, there's no, there's nothing out there for for uh fuel, uh I guess you could say. Trucks that uh, electric trucks, there's no, there's nothing out there for that.
Pickup trucks?
Yeah, pickup trucks, yeah, pickup trucks for for some of the services that that are used in the community. So it's uh, we awarded that uh, that for converting some electric trucks. And we're gonna see how that goes. That was uh, that was pretty much it for the uh ABA QMD. That board's all centered around basically just getting, cleaning up the air and and getting rid of old dirty diesel equipment. And uh just older equipment that is no longer gonna be either allowed to be in service once the new law passes. Or just companies or local businesses, organizations that have have gas powered equipment. That's uh dirtying up our air, so we're uh, we're making progress on that board. It's an exciting board to see the new technology on the forefront and and see what it can do, a lot of battery powered stuff, so exciting stuff. Next is the ABA, AVTA.
I uh, I did not attend, um I had to be somewhere else that that day, so I did not attend that meeting. I did attend the uh later in that same day with Councilwoman Bittencourt, the uh AVTA orientation. So essentially we were. Essentially schooled on on the workings of the AVTA, but I could not attend the meeting that morning.
What's the next one out there? So on AVTA, the uh. We moved the uh program forward for the uh funding for some wave chargers. We have uh, let me see here, we had uh. Find the next item here. We had, we, the, probably the biggest topic was um uh with the uh federal budget cuts and everything like that. Uh we're looking at about a million six uh cut uh in funding. To the transit authority, uh from the feds alone. We uh, but we tried to get ahead of the NDAA uh act that's trying to cut out the uh the buses. And um we're pretty close, we just got the new uh forty five foot commuter. Uh I don't know if you saw the pictures of that, that's a gorgeous bus. And uh we accelerated the contracts to uh, so we can finish filling out our uh. Our our bus fleet out there. So that was, uh those are the main items. Uh the um, the um, looking at the uh. At the performance, key performance indicators and um making uh making a change. We have, while every other bus agency and transit agency is is seeing a major reduction in ridership. We have a sixteen percent increase on our line, sixteen percent increase on our line. And it's mostly because we tweaked Route One. Running a little later and a little bit closer schedule on that. And that that ridership um uh went uh, went through the roof. There's only fourteen diesel buses left and we should be rid of those uh things pretty soon. And there's a lot of uh, all this stuff's uh on their, on their report. But um, the old buses are going back east and to the south, they bought them. So uh, the uh, the feds require that those things be moved uh to other agencies that are getting similar types of funding. So that's AVTA.
Mayor, uh, uh this uh, a few days ago. We received a text from uh Mr. Chris that uh Macy had a death in his family, his his.
Thank you.
So um, it seems to me that that our city should uh do something in terms, I don't know what the services are, what the particulars are.
Yeah, we're trying to still find out what all the details are in that, but uh thank you. And we, that's the other one that I appreciate you bringing that to my attention. So that, we wanna close uh also in uh, in um, in memory of uh Macy, Macy's uh. Macy's daughter-in-law. And uh, not to uh be remiss, it came up in my mind, I was gonna bring it up a later too, uh Mr. Blanco's son-in-law just passed away as well. So we'll add those to the list, but thank you for bringing that up.
But I think if there's gonna be, if we could find out what uh, if there's gonna be services or anything like that, whether we can. Uh send some flowers or condolences or something from us.
Okay, that was AVTA. What's next on the list here? Contract Cities Association, um we uh, actually the meeting I think is this week, so there there was no, no report on that one. Audit Committee, I think we had a meeting on that. Okay, and then uh Investment Authority, that one, there is one on that. Uh we haven't had a High Desert Corps or JPA lately. Now, League, League of Cities, uh there um, in League of Cities, we've got uh. Got a whole pile of stuff here from League of Cities. But suffice it to say, a lot of it is end of the year um legislative wrap-ups. And uh, if you wanna know more, all you gotta do is read the paper and follow the Twitter feeds of just about everybody out there that's. Here's the most frustrating thing, Michael brought this up about redevelopment. Beginning of the year, this frustrates me to no end. So everybody told us that we needed to work with the legislature. Legislature, work with the governor, work with everybody. Sat there across the table from the governor, he says, go back, work with the leadership out there in the senate and everything. We did. And we had um SB five, which was specific to housing, which the governor said, I need housing, figure out the housing. So we all worked really hard, we all wrote support letters. We got our uh assembly and our senate guys to write nice letters, glowing letters in support of it. Everybody spoke highly and it gets vetoed. And the governor says, he vetoes it because he sees it as a loss to the state. Wait a second, it's tax increment. If nothing gets built, nothing gets generated, there is no loss. And if you build something, more money comes in and I, you know, it just, it just, we were flummoxed at the con. At every agency and every board, every legislative committee I'm on, we all said, this is a slam dunk, it's gonna get signed. And it didn't. So, I mean, quite frankly, I wrote uh several letters on my own that, to these members that we were played. We were told to play nice in the sandbox and it'll all go good, and we got played, quite frankly, so.
Good use of the word flummox though.
Huh?
That was a good use of that word.
That's word of the day. You worded a day, it was the one I used this week, so. But uh, and then we also had um, we also had uh our um, our our annual meeting down in Long Beach. And um, there there was an issue relative to um. Trying to get some changes over at uh uh the PUC to get more encouraged, more undergrounding and everything. And they got, ah, it just went to to hell in a handbasket with that discussion, unlike our civil discussions here where. But it uh. Yeah, no, it uh, it's um, we we, we're working with the state to try to get the, but here's the deal, what it comes down to is with these undergroundings and everything. There's a, it's a, it's about four million do- dollars a mile out in the countryside to under- underground these things. But and it's about two thirty a mile to insulate them. But um, the consensus seems to be that all these shutdowns and stuff, well rooted in public safety. Are also to um compel the legislature to provide some additional immunity. Uh to the investor-owned utilities and uh to soften the target, which is us, for a massive rate increase to be able to cover this. So, uh that's another one of those that you don't get away from, so. Anyways, uh there was uh, uh quite a bit of discussion on uh, on 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 those, on all of those different legislative fronts from the league, so. Okay, sanitation, do you wanna report on sanitation, sir?
Yeah, I went to uh sanitation, a couple of things that happened, uh we approved plans. To call for bids for construction of the Palmdale Water Reclamation Plant Gas Digestor Bio-Tracking Filter System Project. Which is basically uh, it's a gas, it's a digester to help reduce the level of hydrogen sulfide. Gas through the addition of uh ferocious chloride. Um that's one of the things we got into, and then the other one was uh authorize issuance. Issuance of purchase orders for on-call hydro- geological and chemical fate transport services for a three-year period. To uh geologic associates. And we did the same thing over in the Lan- at uh, at the Lancaster District. I believe that was uh District fourteen.
Okay.
That was it.
Alright, any new news from SCAG?
With LA County Transportation Coalition.
You missed that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that one. We'll go, I'll, I already called it, so let it, let me go then, I'll, I'll jump back, I'm sorry.
Yeah, from SCAG, there was a new um updated um methodology tool released just yesterday or this morning. That methodology tool actually.
That's a, that's only a recommendation.
It's only a recommendation, yes, uh there'll be a meeting on Thursday. Uh and I presume that we will be looking at that uh modified uh tool to see if there is the support from uh the board.
But all depend on where it gets shifted. That's what it's all about.
So anyway, the, those numbers are much lower and it seems like there's gonna be, I expect support from other cities to look at an alternative uh.
There's a hands and a hands not, so I can tell you which way they vote.
Yeah, that's gonna be fun.
Yeah, no, it is not.
Um so anyway, that really brings down the uh numbers assigned to Palmdale from fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand to seven thousand or something like that. That's the latest news. It was just released uh again either this morning or last night and.
Yeah, I think part of it was released last night and then the formulas got out this morning cuz none of the links weren't working last night, so. It's changing as it, by the minute, so.
So that's the latest on the arena allocation.
That's probably the biggest issue down there going on right now, so. Not important on NCTC, sir?
Well, let's see, we had a good, we had good representation on NCTC, uh Mr. Correa was there, you were there, I was there. And uh it was an interesting discussion in in terms of where the leadership is gonna go, and you ended up being the uh, the second in command there.
Yeah, Burgers, Burgers a chair and uh one of you guys sucked me into being the vice chair.
I mean. It just sort of happened.
Sure, it happened that way, yeah, yeah.
That was one of the things that happened there, so I think there'll be good leadership there and uh moving in a good direction.
I think we have some uh, we have uh, uh, there's quite a bit of um funding starting to come down the pipe for a lot of these projects. Uh we're gonna be moving forward with uh um some, getting some additional reports on funding options. Uh for some projects on the fourteen. The uh, there's some stuff with high-speed rail that's going on, funding that's coming in. So there, there's a lot, there's gonna be a lot happening, uh quite frankly, I don't see that staying as a quarterly meeting. Uh I think there's so much going on that it's gonna be happening much faster than you think.
Yeah, the other thing is the number of projects on the pipeline for Caltrans, so on Palmdale Boulevard.
Yeah, a lot of ADA projects, a lot of stuff that they're fixing.
Free away.
Yep.
So that was interesting. Congratulations on, on your election.
Yeah, thanks, so I appreciate that. I appreciate the sincere. Yeah, thanks, so I appreciate that, I appreciate the sincerely appreciate the uh the uh confidence on that. Uh Sister Cities, we already did the whole big um.
You skipped the recycled water board.
Yeah, I'll I'll report on that, we had a meeting uh last week or two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Where we uh awarded a uh a grant to city strategies for the uh. Uh agency to prepare a city web uh webpage for the agency and also to include um some community meetings.
Did you get the logo?
Uh.
Believe it or not, this is the stuff that that stopped us from getting a grant is, well, we didn't see a nice pretty logo and. We we don't see enough information on uh on the on the internet about you guys, so.
Yeah, they're gonna do our our marketing for us and.
Yeah.
And brand us.
Hmm, so that's what happened at the recycled water board.
Yeah, well, moving forward, right?
Yep.
So you guys uh speaking of uh recycled water and um and our water agency, guys seen the um seen the uh uh. Amargosa Ponds project over there, got water in some of those ponds already.
We talked a little bit about that that meeting. I think they're saying uh staff is indicating that we should have something like a ribbon or something to look at in the next couple of months here.
Well, I think, no, they're turning it over, I think this, their intention is to turn it over like before Christmas, so stand by it.
Wonderful.
Yeah, that's that thing is amazing, you go over there and take a look at it. Okay, um so I don't I don't know on the A Q M D thing, uh Austin, if you covered a couple of these items here. Uh I know that we're working with, uh did you report on the A V Schools Transportation Agency?
No.
And so uh uh Morris had reported that uh they've got some new buses coming in, we've been working really hard. To uh repair their hoses and stuff like this and they're bringing in some hybrids. Uh and they're also uh uh working on uh going all-electric, they're gonna have seven. And we're with A Q M D is helping provide a substantial part of the funding for the schools transportation, those stinky. Smelly buses that your kids are running on, we're trying to get those things replaced.
Yeah, the Bluebirds.
Oh, God. Uh and you talked about the farm, cow and cow farms, did you get them?
Yeah.
On those guys.
Got their grant.
And um. The uh and this is important if you've got large trucks. Uh if you've got fourteen thousand gross vehicle weight or better, you're gonna have to start meeting S B one very soon on your commercial trucks. Um and that's that's a big hit, I think there was an article in the paper about that the other day. Uh and if you uh all all you guys who wanna go putting out um getting generators for your houses. If you don't wanna have to get ongoing air air quality permits and keep a bunch of records. Below, you need to keep it below fifty brake horsepower, forty-nine horsepower or less for your home generators. And you don't have to s- get a bunch of permits and stuff like that, you know, so uh just for what that's worth. Uh S B two-ten is also gonna be requiring diesel small checks for all heavy-duty trucks coming up. So that's a that's a big, that's hurting a lot of these guys right now, so um. Uh other stuff, the prison?
Uh yeah, no, I didn't make the prison meeting.
Okay.
I was on my way and got called back to work, so.
Funny how that works?
Yes.
Any any other uh stuff you wanna report on?
Um I went to the Coffee with the Cop, surprise, surprise, great event. Um we went to the, I wanna talk a little bit about the Long Beach Conference, some really, really important topics were brought up there. Um clearly, I missed the civility on for council members um class, they actually did have one.
Yeah, should've gone to that one.
Yes, I should've made that one, um but I attended uh probably two or three of the sessions on how important the census is to our city.
I apologize.
And um we really need to step up um on the census and get that information out to the public. That's vital to our community, we talked about raising income and our revenue and getting money to our city. We need every single citizen in the city to to or resident to count, so we need to really start to push on all the U S Census. Uh it was a really good um conference, it was exhausting. It started sometimes at seven o'clock in the morning, we didn't get done till five-thirty, six o'clock at night and it was all.
Oh, you went home early.
Yeah, because I I a lot of times I didn't go out to eat and stuff, so I had papers to grade.
We doing, we're gonna be doing the kiosks for the census?
I I would really like to sit and work with Nardi, I think she's doing the census stuff and share with her some of the information that I got about what other cities are doing, there were some really great presentations. So if if you if I have the opportunity, I'd like to just.
I uh I attended Day of the Dead this this weekend up at Pomplun Square and we did have a tent set up and it looks like.
Oh, good.
Like she is starting to dig in and start doing some outreach to the community and. They had a couple of tables set up and and even a representative from the census that was out there and it looks like we're just starting to get.
Good.
Get underway with that.
Yeah, um I also did the orientation with uh Councilmember Loa for the A V T A, that was very informative. Um I attended the Sheriff's Department's Annual Trunk Retreat Event at the Hammock Center, great event.
When did it first pack?
In fact, I was there with you, Austin.
That was great. I think it's the third year doing it and it gets busier every year.
Yeah, yeah, we actually parked down at the Sheriff's Department and walked down because you know parking, we 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 need more parking.
Get there earlier.
Yeah, well, I I was actually working, I went there on my lunch break, so.
Yeah, we heard you got there pretty early, mayor.
Yeah, we were, yeah.
I was there, left and came back and boy, I couldn't hardly find this spot.
And I'm sure there's other events attended, but um I was in such a hurry to get here today, I left my appointment book sitting on my desk, so. That's all I can remember that I went to this this month, so.
There's so many things going on.
So for me, I attended Dia de los Muertos, you're gonna get a Sunday party early in the morning, about ten o'clock. I did notice uh two city booths, uh one for the census and one for the general plan. Um I also attended the uh gala dinner with the uh veterans uh this weekend with the mayor. Uh we did attend, Mayor and I attended a V I P uh event for A Y S O over at Plona Vista this Sunday. A great event, a lot of turnout.
Explain it, explain what that was, man, that was.
So that is, it's a V I P program for challenged uh kids that play soccer from all ages. And they came from as far as Downey to participate.
And they love our park.
We yeah, we we talked, we talked to the uh team moms and rooting for their teams, their kids, they loved the park.
Oh, I talked to some and he talked to some that didn't, my Spanish isn't as good as his, so.
So we both talked to them, uh multilingual and uh great event, um really proud to see that this event is as big as it is. Uh they rotate it every year, they go to different regions, this time it just happened to be here in uh in Palmdale, Plona Vista. Uh did attend the uh um E C H D meeting on October twenty-first. Uh where the latest uh numbers for the arena now uh were uh released. Um and then they just released again the numbers just last night, um what else did I do?
On on that topic of that soccer thing we were out there, you've gotta you've gotta look at some videos on this thing, it'll choke you all up, okay? Uh these kids are out there playing their hearts out and some of them that have the the focusing problem that many of us might have as well. But some of these kids are having a real tough time with it, they actually, and for some of the kids that have physical disabilities. I've never seen a kid in a wheelchair or a walker play soccer until Sunday. And we sat there and watched and they have these guys in these other colored shirts that are their buddies that are encouraging them and are out there pushing them. And uh taking the the things off the wheelchairs so the kids can can still swing and kick and stuff like that. It was amazing watching that, so.
And did we have a council worship? Or canceled?
Honestly, I don't remember.
October?
October twenty-fourth.
October twenty-fourth, yeah, uh I think that's my report.
So, go ahead, Richard.
All right, um. Well, one of the things that we did, uh mayor, is that we attended Kevin, uh Hesse, do I pronounce that correctly?
Hennessy.
Hennessy, uh it was at the Cultural Center and it was amazing the amount of uh public and family and friends that were there. Uh that was a very, very moving.
Tables and chairs.
They had to bring in additional tables and chairs and uh it was extremely well-attended and it it was a testament to uh. How wonderful this gentleman had been in terms of servicing the community and being a good father and family member.
A lot of people didn't know he used to be a deputy sheriff.
Right, he was. Um I serve as the um parliamentarian for the National Association of Hispanic Realtors Association and uh N A R E. I I I attended that meeting early in the month. Um I did attend the uh conference in Long Beach, which was very instructive. I tended to uh go to the sessions involving the uh city attorneys, it was very uh uh it was very informative.
I stayed awake through one of those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was good, um I thought it was good, let's see. Um as uh was mentioned before, well, we did go to the N C T C meeting on October twenty-first. Um I did go to the A V T A orientation, I think actually it was my second orientation with A V T A, but. It's amazing, it's amazing how um that's such an important uh entity in this community to provide transportation. Uh to to all of residents and as you pointed out, uh A V T A is one of the few jurisdictions that's actually gaining in ridership. As opposed to many others that are losing it, particularly down in Los Angeles. So I went to the uh Palmdale Sheriff's uh trunk trunk retreat, I was at the uh at the Palmdale Sheriff Booster's Booth. Uh handing out candy to all these kids and then you kinda hooked me into this chili cook-off judging contest.
Yes, I did.
And I paid a price for that.
Yes, you did.
It was good, but then then I went back to um.
And I had no problem.
Yeah, and that's that's usually.
Switcheroo there.
It is a big switcheroo, I don't know what happened, but anyway.
Man, oh man, the winner.
It was good, though, and it was good to be out in that part of the uh.
Yeah, no, it was, yeah, a community event and they asked us to judge it and uh they at the last minute, they had somebody fall out, they said, do you know anybody? And I said, I'm looking at one right now, I know somebody that is an excellent eater as well as I am.
So anyway, it was it was a lot of fun and uh and it's it's uh Anlo Valley Church, I think it is, and uh they're out there in the um. Thirty-fifth West out there, that 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 direction, so uh it was good, there's a lot of people there, they had a little parade of all the little kids with their Halloween costumes and so on. And then after that, I went back to um the trunk.
Went back to urgent care.
No, I went to trunk or treat, I didn't go to urgent care for a couple of days, um but uh and the sheriff was there, I think that trunk or treat is uh is great. Is probably the best attended that we've had so far, right, sheriff? So um I think it's uh it's getting better year by year, there was enormous community participation there. And uh we gave out bags and bags of of candy that day, um let's see.
Great job, your whole crew over there, so I don't beat you up all the time, you guys did good, did very good, it was out, I mean, the. You had the explorers, you had all the deputies, the community guys, you had all kinds of toys out there. And and I don't know, we're we're Sneed and uh and Wilson, uh they're the two, they're the two suspects that uh troll everybody. They already get all those cars, that's unbelievable.
Yeah, there was a lot of a lot of the car clubs.
Most people had multiple car events that day.
Right, and they had uh they had all those trophies out there, it was a big massive table full of these trophies that that were gonna go to all these cars. And all these car clubs and uh it's good to see those guys actually doing something, pulling uh intended with the Sheriff's Department to promote uh law and order here.
That was, that was a good job. Community relations.
It did, uh the A V Hispanic Chamber, Dia de los Muertos uh here at Poncetlan Square was was very well-attended. And uh there was concerns because they just moved it from Lancaster over to Palmdale, but I think they did a great job and uh it was it was also well-attended. They did a good, a good job, that's gonna be a good uh that's gonna be a good um event for our city, uh they brought that back here. And then uh earlier today, I went to the Hispanic Chamber luncheon.
Mister Fisher?
Uh a lot of the same events, I attended Kaleidoscope, which there was a lot more going on there than the previous year, it looks like they got more vendors and. More artists and and uh it was just definitely a busier environment and I got some good feedback. Some of the vendors said it was one of the easiest events to set up and deal with and and have sales and and. They had nothing but positive things to say about the staff and and uh working with staff as far as getting their uh. Their table set up and 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 selling their products and and all that stuff, they said that's one of their most favorite events is when Kaleidoscope comes around. Um State of the City, rest of you guys were there, yeah, you guys, I was waiting to see if anyone would remember State of the City. I know, right? So I that was that was a packed room, yeah, videos on Facebook and YouTube and all that stuff. Uh Marie Care Park had a haunted house that was uh third year doing it, very exciting stuff. Uh trunk or treat, I was there, Long Beach, I was there uh for League and usual stuff, yeah.
All right, a couple of things I wanna just uh wrap up with here, so uh I was privileged to uh. Attend the uh sanitation meeting down below and um so we have a meeting on the topic of weighted voting. And we lost it on a weighted vote. It was insane, uh it we had, um and here's the problem, we've got two districts. Both neighboring us that never attend and guess how many votes we lost by?
Two.
Two votes, guess how many votes we lost with at the last meeting?
Two.
One, guess how many votes we lost with at the meeting before that? One, okay?
You might explain weighted vote.
Okay, so the way the weighted votes go is if you happen to be the chair of. Let's just use a random number, let's say five, which, oh, coincidentally, that's a number. If you happen to be uh the chair of five boards, you walk in with five votes, okay? And if you happen to be the chair of two boards, you walk in with two votes, so. Put on your math hats, there's twenty-two. Uh twenty-two districts, okay? Uh you have um if you have twenty-two districts, you need, what, twelve people? To have uh have the quorum, right? Right, when you have twelve people, how many people, how many votes do you need to carry the ele- the 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 item? Seven, you have two people on that board, they have five votes and two votes, so uh. There was a there was a revolt at the previous meeting where a bunch of us just got up and walked out, they said, what the what's the point of us being here? And they decided to put it on the agenda for us to talk about this so we could figure out a solution and when we came down to it, um the vote was um. Uh eleven to nine to leave it the way it is. But the problem was, there were two people that carried seven of those eleven votes. So um you know what, when you get your sanitation bills on the entire west side of Palmdale. And neighboring communities or in Santa Clarita, I'll give you the name of the person to call, okay? Cause they're the ones that are not going to these meetings that could have an impact. There are consequences to votes or not voting and the the last one, um I don't know if this was in closed session or not. Trust me, it was a lot of money to uh um that uh it was, there was a me-too clause. And they decided that some of the groups weren't, maybe they didn't, maybe the ratification vote ended up messing up some of the people, but. It was a nightmare and uh somebody's gotta do it and I'm down there and uh. That's what this excedrin sits right here for, is after meetings like that, so it's very frustrating and we're working really hard to keep. These are the things we were talking about earlier, about mandatory fees and stuff like this that you have no choice but to pay. It's not like you can choose not to have your sewer hooked up and you can, it's like you, you can't choose not to use the toilets, okay? Even if you don't have a sewer, you're now you're paying on a that uh septic tank fee, you know? So this is the stuff that you still have to pay. And we've got people down there going, it's only three bucks, it's only three bucks a year, probably a million people, I mean, you know, it's, stuff adds up, folks, so. Anyways, but a good time was had by all, um Contract Cities Liability Trust Fund. Um I'll give you what I can tell you, it was called to order, went into closed session, came out of closed session and adjourned, so. But there were millions of dollars doled out in this thing here, I gotta hand it to the sheriffs. Uh except for the vehicle recycling program we have going on lately, uh the um the uh mo- most most of the stuff is trending down. Uh the problem is, is that plaintiffs, attorneys just see everything as a cash cow and uh. Uh and I know we're all working, we're we're trying, we're trying to work with the sheriff himself. Um and uh matter of fact, I am, I was invited to a meeting on Wednesday or Thursday evening with the sheriff.
It'll be Thursday at six P M at the A Lads Building.
Yeah, down there.
I'll be there too.
So if you got anything that you want me to carry down there, I already submitted my questions for review.
Or I can carry it down there.
So, so I didn't, I didn't know you were going.
Hi.
So there you go, so anyways, uh and it was a whole lot, all these things everybody's been going to. Um we've been uh probably at all of those. Um we've been uh probably at all of those, had um very interesting set of meetings uh. Uh uh today on um with uh. Uh the L A County Office of Education and they partnered with the cities and A V T A and all of a sudden. All of a sudden, there was a decision and perhaps our county rep can check on this for me, cause the way it's portrayed to me that the money. That was up here in the Anlo Valley was reallocated to the programs over the hill. And so we've lost, I think it was a half, I I think it was about a half a million bucks. Uh that was going towards transportation for these guys that were in the gain and G R programs that were going to uh. Uh uh job training and interview programs and we've lost that funding, so we're gonna, what little money it was left in there. From what the other partners put in, I think runs out around the end of the year, so um we're we're gonna try, we're. We're gonna be talk, we're gonna be talking to your boss, so heads up.
Do we know why it was diverted?
They said so. Yeah, they, they were just told that that's just what the county and what Metro decided they were gonna do with it, so. Uh we're trying to, trying to keep people working, trying to get people working and it doesn't work if you can't get them to the interviews and stuff like that, so. This was uh, but we're gonna follow up on that and about a billion other meetings with about. Billion other people, billions and billions, so, but uh it was great. So what do you got, what we got coming up here, uh Mister Partey, in the next couple of weeks? So I know this is.
Time, I'm just gonna cover two things, one, uh the lightning loader, the long awaited lightning loader has. Been delivered to Los Angeles and staff will be going down to inspect that, I think there's some uh additional work that needs to be done on it. Uh we're hoping to have it here.
This is for picking up trash close to the road easily.
Yep, so it, it's a dump, combination dump truck and kind of articulated arm that will pick up trash. Uh good for cleanups and uh we're hoping to have it here for the councils, look at it. By the December general plan workshop. And then in other public works news, um the American Public Works Association, the S- Southern California Division. Uh so covers all of Southern California, voted uh Amber Gosa Creek as one of the best projects in Southern California. Uh large ticket projects and then uh Plona Vista Fitness Center. As uh one of the best small projects in California, so uh in Southern California, so two uh great things. For public works and the dinner, I'm looking to see if I can find it. Dinner date will be sent to each of the council members so they know when that's gonna be coming up, I think it's in December. That's it. We have sub mill Friday.
Yep, we got the uh sub mill program for um the uh the.
Installation officers.
Installation of officers, yep, uh and uh also uh December, uh it's when we do the um. Committee and board assignments and stuff like that, so if there's anything that you're on, that you wanna get off of, anything that you're not on, that you wanna get on. Wanna make sure everybody's where they wanna be, uh because we wanna hit the ground running in January, so let us know what that is. Uh also, um uh I wanna thank you for uh some suggestions for the park committee, uh. And uh so we're gonna be having a meeting on that very soon with everybody that responded, so, uh and you know who you are. So we're, it'll be a um uh uh informal meeting for a steering committee to figure out where we're gonna go, so thank you very much for that.
State of the City Manager, um there's been a a recommendation that uh we give a recognition to Rachel Garcia, she's a. Uh softball pitcher for UCLA and she's uh from here and uh.
Heard we were working on that.
Are we working on that already, okay, so you've been in touch with uh Mister Markeen? Yeah, okay, great, that that oughta be good and uh so that oughta come up in the December. Is that, is that, is that what you've got scheduled with you?
It's really gonna depend on her schedule, but we're gonna work around that and try and get it, uh get her here as soon as, as we can to to recognize her and then we're. Uh looking at some other potentially more permanent recognitions for some of our local athletes uh at our parks and so forth.
Is it possible to have a uh something like a Rachel Garcia Day for Palmdale, uh anything like that or not?
Uh certainly a possibility, uh that could be something we can uh, we can work on.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good.
Future, future gent onions?
I I. I live off of Avenue S and I would like to work with staff or the council or the city managers about. Getting some giant signs for Avenue S that say, this is not a truck route.
Oh, and get some pictures, you wanna see them, we did, they just put some out there the other day.
We put a bunch of them.
I want them as big and bright and as close, like everywhere, just everywhere all over Avenue S, because I'm telling you, I pull out of my housing tract on Avenue S. Those trucks are doing sixty, seventy miles an hour and and you gotta get out of their way and they're not even supposed to be on that road.
I wanna commend the Sheriff's Department for their work on that, so. I know that it's tough, so.
It, yeah, I mean that, as long as this um hair blowing thing's gonna be going on.
And they're, they're using Barrel Springs now, I've gotten about eight or ten complaints this week about Barrel Springs as well, so uh they're they're not getting the message. So perhaps we could provide them with some reminders.
I I have noticed our motorcycle cops out there ticketing them and I was thrilled, I actually stopped and took a picture of one, cause I was so proud.
Any else? Okay, I have motion adjourned, any pose? Were adjourned, see ya. Oh, um.
I know, I said one o'clock.
The um American Family Christmas thing's coming up on here?
Yes.
Uh so, so if you wanna, if you wanna be at the uh decorating and stuff that's coming up here very soon. Rancher Vista area is having a Christmas tree lighting on December tenth, get it on your calendars.